If everybody will stand, the invocation will be led by Mr. Beasley from Calvary Chapel here in Perump Valley. Let us pray.
Father God, we come before you and we thank you for this time. We thank you for your love, Father, that was forever settled on the cross. We ask and we lift this meeting up to you day to day, Lord, that your will would be done, Father. We ask that you would bless this place with your wisdom, Father God, so that the decisions made would glorify you, Father. We want to lift up our troops and we want to lift up our local police department as well, Father God, and this, everybody in this building and in this meeting, Father, that you would protect them and that you would be with their families, Father God. We thank you for your blessings upon this country, Father. We love you and we just seek your wisdom and we seek your will, Father. Please be with us today, Lord, as the county commissioners deal with business, perump business, Father God, and that the decisions that they make would just honor and glorify you, Father, and that they would not be decisions based on our wisdom, Father God, but that you would give us the wisdom that only you can give, Father, to glorify you, Lord. And I just want to thank you for this time, Lord, and thank you for all the time that everybody has taken to prepare for this meeting, Lord. And I just ask for your blessing upon this place and lift up Perump Valley to you, Father God, that you would be glorified through it, Father. And we love you and praise you, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'm going to open this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, April 19th, 2011, 10:00 a.m. First order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Borowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Support our troops.
Amen.
Okay, we'll go to item number two, action approval of the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners Meeting of April 19th, 2010. Mr. Osborne, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any emergency items this morning?
Not that I'm aware of.
Since there are none, you can strike number seven. Number 10. We will be having both labor closed session and legal closed session today.
That's my understanding.
We want to pull 11H, as in Henry. Strike number 12. Strike number 14 through 19. Number 21 and 22. Number 24. And 29 through 31. I believe that's it.
Commissioners, anything that you need to pull? If none, we'll go to item number three, action approval of the minutes for the Board of County Commissioners Meeting for January 18th, 2011.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple of notes here. On page two, it's number six, general public comment. They have a Heath Campbell stated that he represents Heath Lab Factory. It's Laugh Factory. And also in the following paragraph, it should be changed to Laugh Factory. That's what it is. And on page 21, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th paragraph, after the comma, but it did not make a lots of sense. A lot of sense, I believe, unless Mr. Coons, he said a lots of sense. I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, that same, Sam, that same paragraph? It's a statute and not a statue. The statute didn't say anything, but the statute did.
Yeah. I thought it was a statute.
Ryan could have said that.
No, you could have, Gary. Thank you. Thank you, those are all my comments. Anybody else?
I had the same things that Commissioner Shinhofen did with the addition of statute.
Commissioner Wickman, you're up.
I only have one, and that is on the bottom of page one. The last paragraph on the page, it says, "There was general discussion on the Title II money that the counties put into the U.S. Forest Service Fund. It is the U.S. Forest Service Secure Rural Schools Fund."
SRS.
SRS. You thought you were going to get away with that, didn't you? Commissioner Borowski, no? All right.
Title II. It says Title II. It says the numeral II instead of Roman numeral II.
Motion to approve minutes with corrections noted.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shinhofen to approve with the condition of the changes, and I believe it was second by Commissioner Beasley.
I think you're right.
Further discussion? Off the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes by zero. We will go to item number five, announcements. I don't have any forms for it. Is there any announcements in Tonopah? There's only one person in Tonopah. Okay, if there's no announcements, we'll go to item number six, general public comment. General public comment, three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on matters considered during this period until specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment?
I'm sorry.
General public comment?
Wait a minute, give me, give me one second. No, these are all on 13A.
Okay. Is there any general public comment in Tonopah? Seeing none, we'll go to item number eight, action, commissioners' managers' comments. This item limited to announcements, topics, issues proposed for future workshop or agendas. Commissioner Wickman.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Borowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent three days last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, in Carson City. I wanted to observe some of the proceedings going on up there, but I also wanted to talk to our Assemblyman and Senator on the Public Utilities Commission, UICN, and the Sonny Ridge problem down here. I also did sit in on a lot of work sessions and just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
No, thank you.
There was one topic that caught my attention, of course, the water law topics, but the use it or lose it. They did extend that so that they'd have the possibility of working on that a little more. The state water engineer didn't like it, but thank goodness it got to move along a little bit. I missed the tri-party meeting because, here in Perump, because I had to go to Denver for Commissioner Hollis on the ECA conference. I believe Cash has sent everyone a summary on that, so I don't need to waste time on that. And I will be bringing two agenda items forward at the next meeting. One of them I'll disclose right now, the next one later in the meeting. I have, also while I was in Carson City, I've been trying to find a way to get to Endot to ask that they dedicate 160 from the Nye County-Clark County line to 95 as a Veterans' Memorial Highway. I've been asked by quite a few veterans about that, and it took me for quite a while just to find out the process. I finally did hear from Mary Martini yesterday, and I've also asked Dr. Tom Waters, the town board level, to do the same thing, is to put an agenda item on, asking the board to send a letter of support to Endot to go ahead and move forward with that. And Tom, I hope that you'll follow up at the town board level as well.
Which, did he say, they say, Mary said that it was okay? Because remember when we tried to do the Long Williams Highway and they said no?
No, well, okay. I've been told a lot of things, Commissioner Beasley, and I don't know which one to believe. She called yesterday. She apparently had a call from Assemblyman Goodheart, and I was sitting in his office when he called, and he was quite adamant about that the state needed to listen to the request of the citizens of Perump, that, that they should look at, and she said she would move forward with it. She would start moving forward with it yesterday, and then when we, the proper protocol would be for the Board of County Commissioners and the town boards to forward a letter asking to have that done. And one person said that you had to get it through the legislature. I go up and talk to the legislators and they go, "I, I don't know the process." So now we know the process, and I've already pulled the agenda item. The other agenda item, I know you're in a hurry, but Commissioner Hollis, but the other agenda item I will disclose later when we get to 13A. Okay?
Okay. Commissioner Beasley, do you have anything? Commissioner Kenover?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's come to my attention that we, as a board, have not reviewed our county manager, his job description, his job, his job performance, that's the word I'm looking for. So I'd like to, I guess it's HR, ask HR to bring forward how we, how we do that, or you can bring forward the form. Can you tell me, Daniel, since I'm new at this, what do we do to put this on a timely basis?
You have, you can direct me as the HR manager to send you each the evaluation form that is used to evaluate employees within the county, and then you can make a decision from there on how you want to go about either, one, reviewing them collectively, that would have to be done in an, in an open forum like this, or the county manager can have access to those evaluations individually. I'm not sure what direction, how you want to go, if you want to just make sure that each of, that he hears from each of you how you believe he's doing performance-wise.
Yeah, I just want us to review them. I don't care in what format we do it. I don't care if it's live, anybody have a...
What do you want to do, Dan, from like the last year, or he'll be here three years in August?
Well...
I can, I can only offer my suggestions since January, but I don't know what...
I can tell you what we've done historically in the past when evaluations have been late. It's difficult to go back collectively a lot of years. So if you went back for the previous year, that would be fair. You could decide that you want to go collectively all the way back to the beginning, because the rest of you have, have been here for that entire time. Dan would go back to what he's, you know, Commissioner Shinhofen would go back to what he's experienced as a commissioner.
Yeah.
But then what you decide you want me to do with those evaluations, once I receive them from you, that needs to be also decided, whether or not they just go into his file available for his review and, and preview, or if you want to discuss it publicly, we'd have to agendaize that.
Brian, Mr. Coonsy, I thought there was an NRS that said we had to do performance reviews of county managers in an open public forum. Isn't that the law now?
Let me check on that.
I'm pretty sure...
Yeah, I think you're right, but I want to double check on it.
And I think it was just since the last session of the legislature, because I disagreed, I really disagreed with that. That's why I always remembered it.
It didn't used to be that way.
No, it did not.
It, it, you could go into a normal closed session because you're considering somebody's character, but, but there were restrictions, but I'll double check on that. I'll get an answer to you today.
Okay.
Is it, is it all right if she goes ahead and gives the commissioners' evaluation forms?
Yeah, there's sort of no problem in doing that. It's just that when you come together to review them, we'll check to see if that needs to be done in an open meeting or like you can do it in closed.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, that's fine, just give us the forms, then we can decide whether we're going to do it in an open, after we get direction from the DA.
Yeah, then we decide what, exactly what, whether or not we put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't know if we can decide if the law says...
Well, whatever, whatever we're directed to do by NRS.
Okay, then I'll send the forms out to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also then, to the county manager, what I, I would, I'd like to ask from you is a review of Darryl Lacy's performance as the planning, what's the word?
The temporary community.
Yeah, and I'd like a review of that to see, is this a position that we want to not make temporary anymore? I'd like to see what's been done, how much time he's put in, is this something we need to do full-time, or is it, has he served his purpose and we can relieve him of that duty, because he has five hats on now anyway. So if you could, in the next meeting, get me that review, I'm sure if the, you know, the other board members may want that too.
Absolutely.
That's something I would like. Okay, I'm getting down to my list here now. I gave Rick a copy of a statement that I got from the PUC website, and I'd like to have brought back before the board, possibly next month also. We just paid UICN quarter of a million dollars, 187,000 of it was, for wastewater capacity. And I have their representative on, on record with the PUC saying, quote, "During the next 20 years, there's no anticipated need for additional water storage, water supply, nor wastewater treatment capacity." Well, with, with that statement, I don't know why we paid the 187,000. I'd like to bring, have that brought back up for the board to review and possibly ask UICN then to refund us that money, since they are on record as saying they don't need the capacity. And I'll turn this over to the clerk, too. And then my last thing is, I know I'm tilting at windmills, but I can't take it. Forestry Service is studying the butterfly on Spring Mountain. I'm wondering, just, you know, I've got water beetles outside my back door, maybe they could, maybe they want to study them next, but they're, they're all in a frenzy in Washington. How can we save money? Well, how about we cut that? Anyway, that's just my little off-the-topic rant.
Well, we have fishes, turtles, why not a butterfly?
Why not the butterfly? There's some ticks and water, and bedbugs we might want to look at next, I don't know.
Oh, we got a beetle bug that's out here at Sand Dunes.
Say that that long.
I mean, they charge big money in Las Vegas to kill them, but we're out here protecting them.
Protecting them. That's, I know, I know it's tilting at wind...
Makes sense.
Sorry, I just had to get it off my chest, thank you.
Shirley's laughing at me.
That's it, that's done enough.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Do you have something, sir?
I just want to be clear to Commissioner Shinhofen, is there anything you need me to do on your issue with UICN and the new jail? I did, I did act on your direction yesterday, and is there anything else you need?
Yeah, I'd like to actually bring that agenda item back up and, and, and request UICN to either refund us the money or explain the comment, because the comment stands on its own there.
I believe you can bring it back up since it was the majority vote, so it's appropriate.
And then let them explain to us which, which is true, because this was done under oath to the PUC, and that's the whole copy of it. I'd be happy to turn it over to the clerk, too, but bring it forward again.
Would you like this?
Let them come before the board and explain it. She really wouldn't.
Testimony from the PUC?
That's all for me.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, quickly, if I, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Brian.
On the question of the evaluation, county manager does fall in the list that has to be done in an open session, so we'll have to put that on the agenda.
You hear that?
I knew it was that way.
I do, too.
Yeah, because it was, it was bundled in a bunch of open meeting law changes.
We didn't like it when it came down, if you remember.
Yeah.
It's a laundry list, and he's, and he's on there.
Yeah.
How about district attorney?
So are you swinging?
Not on there.
See, these lawyers, they always figure it out.
There you go.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go to our 10 o'clock item, action discussion, deliberation, possible decision to affirm, reaffirm, reverse the decision to deny medical indigent benefits for payment of a medical bill.
Shirley Trumbull.
Is that Shirley Trumbull?
Did you say Shirley Trouble?
Trouble, yeah. Like mother like daughter? Daughter like mother? And that's Corinne.
Shirley, can you do the mic?
Key the mic.
Push the button, huh? No, thanks, sorry.
Yeah, that's it. Now you're on the wheel.
Now I'm on, okay. The denial on this case right now has to do with the fact that the client did not follow through with the policies and procedures that we had. We haven't actually, if this board reverses that decision today, it will still need to go back to see if there's, as far as resources and income, if he would still be eligible. Basically, our rules say that you must follow through with, applying with Social Security through SSI and through Nevada State Welfare for Medicaid. And the reason we do that is because that's a prior resource, and if they approve, then they would pay the bill. So our client did start off applying with both of those agencies, but our policy also states that he has to continue to do appeal if you're denied. In general, you're usually denied twice with Social Security before you go through administrative law judge, and our policies say you must follow through on those, and at least until you've heard, been heard before administrative law judge. And then it also says you have to continue to do the appeals with Medicaid. It was done for a while, but then it was not done in November, I believe, of '09.
Shirley, were there some mitigating circumstances as to why the policy or the procedure wasn't followed?
You would have to ask the client that. I don't, I don't know for sure. He had been, he had been following through on November 20, 29th of this year, of 10, rather. We sent a final notice, and in that final notice, we said that we had received a denial, that he had been denied by Nevada State Welfare Medicaid because SSI had been denied and he had not provided an appeal, verification that he had appealed the SSI.
Yes.
And so we sent a letter to him on the 29th stating he had to do this right away, and that failure, we stated our policy, and that failure to do so would cause denial of this. To my knowledge, our client did finally apply, the earliest we know is March, just March 28th of this year. He, he reapplied, but it's too late for us to go back now. It's too late for Nevada State Welfare. When you apply for Nevada State Welfare, you can check a box that says, "I want you to go back three months prior for meds," so if we apply in March, they would only go back three months, not county March.
Shirley, does the policy say that he has, that the client has appeal rights, and are the, is the decision appealable to the Board of Commissioners? Is that what the policy says?
Yes, he has appeal rights. He appealed to the county manager. That's the first step, is an appeal to the county manager. We had the hearing, our client did not show. Our client, we have a record that said it was picked up, but our client says he didn't, he did not receive it. So he did come back in at some other...
Your record said it was picked up. What record was that?
It was from the post office. It was e-certified.
Okay, so it was a return receipt, it wasn't an email?
No.
It was a return receipt on...
Yes, everything's sent out certified, but now some of them are sent out e-certified, and that was sent out e-certified.
We, we see you, sir. I just want to question the staff first, thank you.
So we don't, we didn't have, actually, on the 29th, on November in 2010, when we sent out the letter saying he had to reaplay, or he had to appeal, he did sign that personally, so that we have. But he, he was not able, he did not, he said he did not get the notice to appear for his appeal hearing before the county manager.
Who signed for it?
It was e-certified, and we didn't know who signed for it. We just showed that it was delivered.
And Rick, I'm assuming that your decision was to uphold the decision of Health and Human Services, and what was the basis of your, what formed the basis of your decision?
He fell outside the parameters that would have allowed me to go ahead and approve it. They stayed within the guidelines as they are established.
So in your, in your opinion, this was not a judgment call on your part? It was, it was clear cut, and you had policies and procedures to back up your decision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
What is your recommendation, Shirley?
Our recommendation serves the denial be upheld, based on the fact that the client did not follow, did not follow through with policies and procedures.
Say that again.
Our recommendation is that it be, the denial be upheld, based on the fact he did not follow through with policies and procedures.
Mr. Chairman?
The client, I think, would like to...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question before we get to? They have to, let's see if I understand this right, they have to apply to Social Security and be heard by administrative judge before you can move forward, is that what?
No, the policy is if, if either, if a client says that they believe they're going to be disabled for more than 12 months, or if a client has already started the process of Social Security applying for SSI, then we make them continue or we tell them they have to apply. If you were to go into the hospital and you just had a stomach pain or something, we would not make you do that. But this procedure was already started, he had already applied. So we, you have to apply through Social Security and you have to apply through Nevada State Welfare. If you get supplemental security income, which is called SSI, you will get Nevada, you will get welfare, Medicaid, if you've applied. So once you go through SSI and you apply through Nevada State Welfare, then SSI in general normally denies you the first time in about a year.
Absolutely.
At that time, you appeal, and at that time, welfare at some point in time is going to find out that you were denied, so you're going to have to show them you appealed. Then Social Security more than likely is going to deny you one more time in about six more months, and the same process. Then after they've denied you the second time, then the next time you go before Social Security, you will go before an administrative law judge. If he denies you, you also can then go before district court and you can appeal. But our policies do not say that they have to go through district court. We felt that that was going too far, but we, because it's pretty standard that you get denied twice, we feel that going before the administrative law judge isn't appropriate.
Okay, so that's pretty clear to us.
So basically, we're the provider of last resort, because there are other federal programs out there to provide the coverage.
Right, and, and we hold our cases, if, we hold them pending, we tell our clients they have to continue with us providing us what we need, but we hold it pending until we get at least an administrative law judge review.
Is your client here this morning?
Yes, sir, he is, right there.
Do you, do you want to make a statement, or?
Yep. I do have paperwork and documents.
Okay, hold on, one minute. We have a little procedure here called state your name.
My name is Timothy James Pearson.
And spell your last name for the record.
And I did not provide documentation to the, to the people here before me, and I had, from Social Security, I have paperwork and documentation as such that you need.
Why didn't you provide it?
This came to me yesterday, and it's locked up in the house. The guy's in Las Vegas today, and he's not available today.
But you've known since November that...
Yesterday, it came in the mail.
Well, why didn't you, why did you not maintain contact with Health and Human Services?
I, I have provided them the information accordingly to what they need, but the new documentation from Social Security Office was just, came yesterday.
Commissioners, he did apply, as I said, he did apply for SSI and Medicaid, but that was in March of this year.
And I have a new, a new documentation to that as of yesterday.
And he did supply that to us that he applied in March, but it is too late for us to go back. Welfare will not go back for these bills.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And Social Security gave me a letter, letterhead stating as such that I did apply for SSI and indigent program and stuff like that, since I have that paperwork to provide to them.
So Shirley, what should he have done between November and March?
When we sent him his, his notice in November, then at that time, he should have appealed the decision for SSI, and he should have applied, he should have given verification of that to Nevada State Welfare.
And you communicate that to all your clients, I'm sure.
Yeah, so we did that in a, in a letter.
Okay.
What happened, I moved from my previous address on Charleston Park to where I'm living now on Royal Avenue, so the letter and certification of, from the postal office was not deliverable. So it wasn't, I was there.
Which, which letter? Is that the one where...
The certified mail.
For the hearing with the county manager?
Yes.
But that, I don't care about that. Why did you not appeal your decision from SSI in November?
I had not gotten a letter from, because of postal error.
A postal error for four months?
I have no idea, because I was moving from transition, because I have an underlying...
Did you know that in November, when... Did you know that in November, when your, when your SSI was denied, that you had to appeal?
No, because I was in transition, because I'm indigent. I have, I'm living, I have a bicycle for transportation. That's all I have, and I have no, no proof of anything.
You could not have gotten a post office box here?
No.
You can't get a, well, how do you get mail if you don't get it?
I had no ID. I just recently got my new driver license, and I didn't have a driver license before that.
Mr. Pearson, shouldn't you, knowing that you were transient and you didn't have a permanent post office box or mailbox, wouldn't it have occurred to you to stay in contact with Health and Human Services to ensure the continuation of your benefits?
Yes, I try to do so. Every time I get the paperwork and documentation, I provide it to them accordingly in the best I can.
The letter in question on November 29th, Mr. Pearson did pick up on December 1st. That we have a certified card.
Okay, so, you did pick up the letter on December 1st, and you signed for it, and...
Somebody else signed for me, a person.
Oh, somebody forged your signature?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the decision made by the county manager in this case.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to uphold the county manager's decision on this, this case, which I think it was a denial.
It was a denial, to uphold the denial.
Uphold the denial, and second by Commissioner Borowski. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Being opposed, it passes five zero.
Yeah, exactly.
personnel?
Is there any reason why we can't go into closed session personnel at this time? Okay. We will be going to 11A, Action Closure Reunion Pursuit to NRS 288.220, for purpose of conferring with county management representatives regarding labor negotiation and issues and other personnel matters.
Move to go into closed?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to go into closed session, personnel session. Second by Commissioner Borowski. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Will be in closed session. Board of County Commissioners is back in session. We'll go to... Wait a minute, which one? Okay, we'll go to 10:45, Presentation of Certificates and our Plaques to Seven Employees Honored for Their Services.
You ready? Mike Genge for five years. Gabriella Isaac for five years. Ann Malone for five years. Ken Shockley for five years. Barbara Tucker for five years. Lisa Becht for 10 years. Tim Carlo for 15 years.
15 years in the road department?
Yeah.
That's a milestone right there with these guys.
Been here my whole time.
Okay, I see some friends of mine in the audience, I think.
You have friends?
Very few, especially in the Air Force. I don't have...
Yeah, I was just going to say, the Air Force, Gary. I mean that with all due respect.
Presentation on information on Jade Thunder by the United States Air Force. Want to come? I know you.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner. I am Gene Hill for everyone else.
Would you state your name, make sure your microphone's on, state your name, and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, all. I am Gene Hill from Nellis Public Affairs, and last name is H-I-L-L. And I am joined by...
My name's Rob Rader, R-A-D-E-R, and I'm with Special Operations Command.
Out of where?
Out of Fort Bragg, North Carolina.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Those guys work hard.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Commissioner, we'd like to...
What are we doing?
We'd like to give a presentation on an exercise that we are prepared to conduct in a couple of weeks, and we thought the county commission board would love to know exactly what we're doing. We kind of sat down wrong. We, could we use a laptop, or would you prefer us to use this?
Sure, the laptop's fine.
I hadn't loaded up.
You want to, can you help him with that? Somebody want to get maybe Liz in here?
Well, I think we can, I think we can get it from here.
They're on two, Sam.
Well, we're getting there somewhere. Hey!
There we go, there we go. Commissioner, I'll let Mr. Rader give his presentation.
Okay.
That's better. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Like we said, we're here for a presentation of the Jaded Thunder 11-2 exercise, 11 being the fiscal year and the second exercise of the year. This is from the weapon school. This is our agenda. Our objective is the Special Operations Command exercise, Jaded Thunder. It's a partner with the Air Force, Navy, Marines, and Army, using special operations forces, a high-level integration exercise in desert environment, which Prump fits that category, obviously. I shouldn't have to tell you guys that, right?
No, we thought we, I mean... We were, we were hearing global warming, but we've had probably more snow this year than I can ever remember.
Yes, absolutely. I saw the snow still up there.
I shoveled a bunch of global warming off my back porch two weeks ago.
Go ahead.
This is our, their schedule that we're looking at. It's starting next Wednesday. We'll be operating from 3:00 to 6:00, and then 8:00 to 11:00, Wednesday through Friday, and then the following month, taking a break on the weekend, of course, and then the following Monday, only doing two-day iterations, Monday and Tuesday, and then being finished at 6:00 on Tuesday afternoon.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure, sir.
What is your minimum altitude?
Minimum altitude above ground is about a mile, about 4,800 feet.
So, your airplanes won't be any lower than that?
No, no lower, lower than 4,800.
Because I believe the last exercise, Mr. Hill, was 9,000 feet.
It was, it was. That, 9,000, MSL. MSL. Yeah, MSL. Above ground is 4,000. So, MSL is sea level, and 9,000 feet, sea level. And, Mr. Commissioner, I have that part of the presentation later. These are the participants, like I mentioned, Air Force, Navy, Marine Corps, and the Special Operations Command's Joint Terminal Air Controllers. Those, it'll be a five-to-seven-man team, and of course, the United Kingdom's going to have one team also.
Where's the Army?
The Army is part of the SOCOM.
Okay.
The Army's not flying, the, you know, the Air Force has all the aircraft.
But we used to.
Yeah, we used to.
Yeah, you used to fly, Ben and I.
But the Joint Terminal Air Controllers, you'll see Army represented there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure my boys are on the ground.
They're on the ground. They won't be in the air, thankfully.
You guys discriminate then, huh?
Well, we do have helicopters that are supporting the operation.
Oh, okay, all right.
And they are Army reservists.
Oh, right.
This is, this is the flight pattern, and it, like I was saying, that's sea level, 7,000 feet, sea, above sea level. And, oh, there it is.
You're making me dizzy.
Sorry. I'm looking for, there's a slide also in there that discusses the above-ground level, and that's a...
You know, what I'm trying to get at is not have this circus that we had before, Mr. Hill.
I remember.
Some of the people here really thought they were getting attacked. There were so many planes flying, and they were flying low, and I believe most of us, Commissioners...
Really? Did they really?
Oh, yeah, we got calls on that.
And that's exactly why we're here.
I was in Florida getting the calls. I mean, I don't know what I could do in Florida, but anyway, we just don't want that situation, and the Air Force was gracious. They came up, ton upon, apologized. The exercise was not supposed to be in Prump in the first place. It was supposed to be in P'Och. Somebody decided the winds or something wasn't favorable over there, so they moved...
Is this the Jaded Thunder exercise, or?
Yes.
Moved the exercise to Prump, and Mr. Hill and his people, I don't think really knew that the exercise was in Prump until after the fact.
Right.
But they did come up and assure us that they would come and do these briefings, and we're glad that you're doing it. Go ahead.
Okay. But to answer your initial question, Mr. Commissioner, is that we will not be below one mile above ground. Because Prump is in a valley and surrounded by mountains, you're going to hear some, some noise, but I submit the air conditioner in this building is louder than the noise that you're going to hear from the aircraft.
Good.
Yeah.
I shouldn't hope a dog makes a lot of racket.
My dogs don't agree.
Your dogs don't agree?
My dogs don't agree. They bark every time you guys come, continuously.
This is the local working area that, that we plan on working in for the teams. Each iteration is going to have one five-to-seven-man team on the ground. They'll be in civilian clothing with radios. There's no weapons involved. They'll be driving civilian vehicles, obeying posted speed limits and regulations and such. And like, and here's the, the mention of the aircraft altitude is 4,000 to 10,000 feet, but we will not be around or below 5,000 feet normally.
Okay.
And then the medical support, we may need to evac someone if someone gets hurt, but we haven't had any, any issues with that in the past. We have to plan for the contingency.
Right.
These are the contact info for, for the representatives. I will be on the ground the whole time. I coordinated with the sheriff's office, and, and we've, we met with the town council last week. It wasn't myself. It was Mr. Hill and a representative, Mr., or Major Chansey from, he's the project officer, and then this is Mr. Hill's phone number. So, if anyone has any questions, they can contact us directly.
Well, we, we appreciate Mr. Hill because he's straightforward and tells us what, what he can and such forth, and we like doing business with Mr. Hill.
Thank you, sir.
Even though he does things for the Air Force.
Said, "Help, I'm retired Army." That only helps with Gary.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Go Marines.
Exactly. I reserve the right to mention that again. Now, we'd like to open up to your questions, if you have any.
Well, if, Mr. Hill, if it, if it's the same thing we did the first time here...
It is.
We got no, you know, nobody complained about it. I think the exercise went off very well. We were even given a briefing on how it was going to be done. We even seen it on, on the screen of how the aircraft is going to be following the vehicle and giving the information. So, if it goes as good as the last one, Mr. Hill, I don't think we will have a problem at all.
Sir, I think it'll be just fine. These gentlemen are very good at what they do.
And we, we understand that you have a mission to do, and we're here to be small part in helping you do your mission, so that our men and women are, are trained and, and being able to do the job that we ask them to do.
Thank you, sir. If it, if it helps matters at all, we'd like to send out a few news releases to, to help pass the word that, that this exercise is going on.
Absolutely. I'm sure Mr. Mark Wade over there will get with you, and Caitlin over there, and they'll oblige you on anything you want to be putting.
Be happy to do that. One last note, if I can.
And there's Channel 41 back here.
Sorry?
There's a, Channel 41's in the back here.
Oh, okay.
He's in the closet. We don't let him out here. Rhonda told us not to, never let him out of the closet.
Well, I guess until they finish passing, "Don't Ask, Don't Tell," I'll just leave that alone.
Classified.
Classified, that's right. Sensitive information. Sir, I have one final note for you, and we'll leave you. On the desk to my left, I've brought some Thunderbird memorabilia, lithographs, as well as some books from the team's show period. This is the...
King, I thought you was going to tell me my airplane was sitting outside.
Sir, I didn't think we were going to have to go through that discussion. I figured an airplane right there would be helpful.
Castox has already given me one model airplane. It's about that big.
Well, I'll be happy to send you another.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, do you have an opportunity to work with those out of Fallon?
We do, we do. We're part of what's called the Joint Military Council that operates throughout the whole state of Nevada.
They fly through the northern valleys.
They do.
And it is very, very interesting for the individual to stand on their porch and wave to the pilot as he waves back, and you're...
You haven't lived until they've snuck up behind you when you're driving down 376.
Oh, yes, yes, I've been there, had that experience.
You look out the window, and there they are.
Yeah, I understand. Those, those young men up there, they're having a great time.
Yeah.
We sit at 7,000 feet, but the valley floor is much lower.
I see.
And I literally was looking straight out.
You can look horizontally.
Horizontally, and waved at the pilot, and he waved back.
We never, we never complain.
Nothing more special than that.
We never complain about the noise, because to us, it sounds like freedom.
And, you know, really, I hate to say anything negative about the Army, but actually, from the last exercise you had, I heard very little noise, but the Chinooks make more noise at 2,000 feet.
They do, because they fly much lower.
Than an airplane, a jet aircraft going at 3,000 feet.
Right.
Those Chinooks can vibrate windows.
They're pretty good-sized birds. They definitely can.
But we pretty well got them to stay farther west along that dry lake bed going over to TTR and the test site, so they've been very good in the last few years.
I thought they chose some very good locations. That'll keep...
I thought they chose some very good locations that'll keep most of the noise outside of the city and should be away from the bill of areas.
But most of our citizens are very, very appreciative of the Air Force and the Armed Services. And, you know, it may be a little inconvenient to us. But to make sure that the men and women are properly trained to do their job when we tell them to go do something, that's more important.
Thank you, sir. God bless this great county.
Thank you for the...
Alrighty.
Thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure. Thank you.
You want to go to the roads and I want to talk to... Okay, we'll go to the ten fifteen timed item, recessed to the Knight County Board of Road Commissioners Agenda. Commissioner Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll open the meeting for the Knight County Board of Road Commissioners for April nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. The first item for action is approval of the minutes for the Knight County Board of Road Commissioners meeting for January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven. Why, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four zero, four and one wandering. Is there any general public comment for the road commission today? Okay. No general public comment, no one in Tonopah. So we're gonna go on to the next item, which is action. That's a general road report by our Public Works Director. Good morning, Dave.
And Jared.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Dave, when you get that report from NDOT Aviation on the condition of the runways at Tonopah, can I get a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And I will forward it on to you and Jim Clegg, too.
Oh, good.
You bet.
Is there something you wanted to add, or can we go ahead with questions?
There are a couple of things that we would like to make the board aware of. And there are actually the current chip seal schedule that is actually gonna be starting next week. It'll actually carry out for two weeks.
Yay.
So, and that operation will be starting in the north. And I believe, Jared...
Just a second, Dave. Just a second. Mr. Lewis, please, if you'd go further out, I can't even hear what's...
Take the chairman with you.
Take the chairman with you?
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I'm sorry for the interruption.
You're welcome. I'm never shy about speaking.
You're never shy about anything, Dan.
Jared, you want to go ahead and cover Duck Street, if you would?
Oh, yeah, please. I got a call about that. Did you call Dale Malquest? Okay.
Jared did.
Okay, thank you.
Jared Ward, W-A-R-D. Yes, I did call Mr. Malquest Monday.
Okay.
And talked to him, let him know that if all works good, pending some middle of our traffic control plan, we're starting the twenty-fifth up there, so.
Okay.
He's good.
Was he okay?
Yeah, he's good with it.
Good. Great, thank you, thank you.
The one other agenda item that I'm actually preparing is gonna be on the next board agenda is actually a removal of a street in Crystal, White Boulevard. It was actually chosen by the board to actually chip seal this year. However, we ran into utility issues out there within that road right away. So I'm actually bringing up on the agenda to actually move it to Amargosa because it's within the Amargosa Valley area, if you will.
Oh, you're gonna move the dollars to Amargosa?
The dollar amount, yeah. I just don't want to cut that off the agenda because others can use it. It just will, and that was the only item picked within the Crystal area, if you will. So we are able to actually get four roads in Amargosa for that one road that we actually are gonna exchange in Crystal. I realize that it's not gonna make a couple of residents in Crystal too happy.
But you'll let those petitioners know, because they...
We certainly will. And that is something that actually just came out. We've actually been working on this process for a year and a half and not have been successful up until, you know, just two months ago. Did the process and the motion get picked up by a couple of utility companies to try and work it out. And they've known our chip seal schedule and our timeframe for actually getting this thing on and actually moving. So obviously, it's a little too late, and that was the decision. So I just want to let the board know and obviously why it'd be coming to you.
Okay.
There is, there is one item that I'd like to report on or actually read into the record that Commissioner Hollis had requested last board meeting about the cable barrier rail alongside of one sixty. I do not have an answer regarding the actual message board out there right now, the dynamic message board over the top of the highway. Still working with FAST on an answer regarding that program. But this is actually from the actual engineer at NDOT, Sammy Youssef. And actually has written to me, obviously, in his regard. The cable rail installed on SR one sixty is a rope cable and is briefin' rope fence, is what they call it. This system meets National Cooperative Highway Research Program Report three fifty requirements. And for our reference, I have drawings attached to the actual program of how they installed it and why they installed it. And what that actually is noted on is actually the cable rail on SR one sixty was installed on a six-to-one or flatter slope, which kind of addresses the reason for it not being placed further out off the roadway. And you're thinking that the cars would actually clear it when they actually should run off the actual median, if you will, why they might fly over it. But this is obviously based on that six-to-one slope, and the reason why it's placed right where it is. The height of the cable in relationship to the roadway varies depending on the steepness of side slope. Adjusting all the side slope to obtain consistent height would have required a lot more work and would have made the job unnecessarily more costly. All of the cable installed on SR one sixty meets the conditions it was tested under. Therefore, it serves the actual intended purpose. And I've heard from quite a few other people outside of NDOT that have seen the tested rope barrier, if you will, tested. And it actually is more efficient and more effective than actual guard rail, so.
With less damage.
Yes, less damage. It actually takes out the impact. And it actually is serving two purposes. The person that obviously hits it is not damaged as bad as they normally would be from the severe abrupt stop and the actual overall impact. But kind of takes it within the vehicle, slows it down that impact.
Yeah, I also had a military person tell me that would stop a tank. I find that hard to believe, but...
Let's try it.
They said they do use those in certain locations in the military, and they're effective. And also on that sign on one sixty, that was on the last time we had a snowfall.
Yeah, it was actually on. And me and the DA actually went over that at four o'clock in the morning. And it was not on, it was not on, and we were actually witness to that.
Out all night or up early?
No comment.
And make a long story short, it got turned on after. Actually, what I'm hearing, and I don't have confirmation, but what I was told, it was actually turned on about five-thirty that morning. We were an hour and a half ahead of that.
Is that you and the current DA? You and the current DA?
Yes, yes. We were heading to Reno.
I didn't know you got up there early.
It was a little slick, but we had a snowplow in front of us.
May I ask you a question? Thank you for calling that back to order, Mr. Chairman.
No, I guess it...
Ms. Joanie?
Dave, I had sent a letter to NDOT asking to have the MOU amended for the Calvada Reader Board. Did that amendment, did that amended MOU meet your purposes?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's great, appreciate it.
Okay.
I just wish I would've known I was in Vegas at the time and it was ready for pickup.
Oh, I know.
I could've eliminated a few issues up there.
Well, I thought that was strange. You can come down and pick up your, pick up your letter. I'm gonna drive four hours to go pick up a... And I didn't know you were there, so I should've told you my apologies.
Appreciate it.
We have got Chairman Hollis whipped into shape. We know when he's getting impatient, he calls the meeting back to order.
I told you he was doing it.
Crack that whip, Gary.
Yeah, I know. Dave, I have one question for you. And if it's not something that you have on top of your head, you can give me the answers later. Could you tell me how many miles of road are maintained, Tonopah North, Beatty-Amargosa area, and then Perump as well? Okay?
I do not have that on the top of my head, so I will have to get back with you.
Second highest in the state, I know that.
Well, I know that, too. But thank you very much, I appreciate that. That's in anticipation of your answers. I'll move on to item number four.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah, we're the second highest.
We are adjourned, and I'll return this to you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think Clark County is higher than us.
Yeah.
And then we're number two.
I second it.
Yeah, we're adjourned, we're back.
With your second, we're adjourned.
Okay, we're back to Board of County Commissioners. We'll be going to lunch now, and we'll be back at one thirty. And I'm sorry, because the DA kept us so late in the...
Yeah, the DA kept us late. Look at that, man, you're getting thrown on the bus out all night with Dave, now you're blamed for that? Ah.
See ya.
What time do we get back?
What, one thirty? Pardon me? I look like Elvis Presley? I'll be right in to kick your... Yeah. Elvis Presley was an old fat man when he died. Thanks a lot. Oh, thanks. All right, you're off the book. Good save.
We got no DA here, no clerk here.
Yeah, we better wait until Sam gets here.
There's another commissioner, so now...
That's number four. I'm just going to liquor license, there ain't much on there.
Oh, that's all you're gonna do? Okay, go for it.
Okay, we're back at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. We're going to the ten thirty timed item, recessed to the Knight County License and Liquor Board. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, I gotta time this one, because it's not gonna take too long, so. I'd like to open this meeting in the Knight County License and Liquor Board Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the License and Liquor Board for January eighteenth, two thousand and eleven. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hollis and a second by Commissioner Shinoffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the correction would be a second by Sheriff DeMaile.
I'm sorry, that was you, Tony? I'm sorry. I didn't even see you sitting there. Second by Sheriff, Commissioner Sheriff Tony DeMaile.
I'm not from Jersey, I can't believe you had said that.
I'm timing this, come on, let me get this done real quick here. General public comment, three-minute time limit per person requested, limited to items not listed on the agenda that will actually be taken by the board. Any public comment in Perump or Tonopah?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, now closed public comment. We have nothing else, gonna ask for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hollis, a second by Commissioner Shinoffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. Commissioner Easley is not here at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Commissioners.
About one minute and twenty seconds, I think.
Almost, almost a marathon.
Okay, we'll go to the ten fifty timed item. Action, public hearing, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Knight County Bill number twenty-eleven dash oh-five, a bill proposing to amend Knight County Code Title II Administration and Personnel by replacing Chapter two point one-two Planning Commission in its entirety and other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I do have a letter that was asked to be read into the record on this item. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't open public, you didn't open hearing yet, did you?
This is not a public, yeah, there is a public hearing. Open a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, you want to read it into the record?
Actually, to tell you the truth, is Brian here?
Brian Coonsey?
Yeah.
I haven't seen him back yet.
I would request that we hold this item, Mr. Chairman, until Brian is back in the room.
I think I've got the same letter you got with... But the legislature is going to take that forty thou- or whatever, forty thousand population figure. It's going to be probably fifty or sixty thousand.
Well, that is a possibility, but until they have done that, are we... We are... Is this accurate, the letter that we received? Is this accurate?
Is your letter from George Bernath?
Yes, it is.
That's the same one I have. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with George about this the other day. We have the Perump Regional Planning District, which covers thirty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty people in Perump. And the balance is the rest of the county.
Right, I realize that. He's walking in now, wonderful.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, anyways, and the balance, which is, what's the numbers, about seven, eight thousand, is the rest of the county. And there are no reason we should have to have a special, start another planning commission with seven members and staff and everything else, that we've been doing this for years. There's no reason why we can't continue handling the rest of the county, and...
Commissioner Borowski, I agree with you. My only question would be for Brian Coonsey.
Yeah, that's fine, too, because I was up at the legislature, and that was brought up. And the number, I believe, is going to fifty or sixty thousand. But I don't have that with me, maybe Brian does, so.
And my question would be on legalities. I mean, can you actually break the law because you know they're gonna change the law in a few weeks?
Well, we have been, we have been acting as a planning...
There he is.
We've been acting as a planning commission for years.
I understand that. I would like to read this letter into the record. And Brian, I'm sure you're probably aware of the letter that we received from Mr. Bernath, George Bernath, on this public hearing. Okay, I'm gonna read this into the record simply because he asked that it be read into the record. On April eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, at one oh seven PM, I received this email from George Bernath. It states, "I'd like to bring to your attention something missing from the above-mentioned bill. Knight County's official population, according to the two thousand and ten census, is forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six. Last time I took math, that was above forty thousand. NRS two seventy-eight point zero three zero point one states, 'The governing body of each city whose population is twenty-five thousand or more and of each county whose population is forty thousand or more shall create by ordinance a planning commission to consist of seven members.' The operative word here is 'shall,' meaning you must do it. It is the intention of the B O C C to repeal this outdated NCC in order to create an ordinance implementing a county-wide planning commission.' That's a question. It sure doesn't sound like it from the wording of the bill. I know money is tight, and this is probably one of those unfunded mandates, but according to the NRS, isn't a wise idea. In addition, the NRS further reads in Section two seventy-eight point zero four zero that the members of the planning commission must not be members of the governing board of the city or county. I would appreciate this read into the record by one of you. Thank you, George Bernath, and his address and phone number."
Actually, I did see this email. I didn't realize this is the one you were referring to.
Yes, it is.
Would you like me to comment?
Would you please?
For starters, the... He's accurate in, with respect to the fact that our population does take us over the forty thousand figure. However, that does not by statute become effective until July first. So just because they've now announced that we are over forty thousand doesn't make us responsible for those statutes that deal with the forty thousand dollar cap until July first. So as of today, we are not in violation of any of these statutes based on population. Secondly, I'm sure as the Commissioners know, there's a bill working its way through the... Uh, secondly, um, I'm sure as the Commissioners know, uh, there's a bill, uh, working its way through the legislature, uh, to try to, uh, remove some of these requirements from the counties, um, because, uh, of, of problems like this, that, uh, they are going to increase the, uh, population numbers, um, and, uh, that's, uh, going forward, um, at this point in time. I fully anticipate that we will be exempted, uh, from all of these, uh, requirements, uh, that the legislature currently has. They will raise the population level to a point above, uh, where we are at. The only question is, they don't know if they're going to raise the number above where Douglas and Elko County are at, because they're the other two counties that are affected, uh, by the same thing. Uh, so, we may, we may be the only one that's exempted out, that they're looking at whether or not they're gonna exempt out Douglas and, and Elko. Uh, but, the, um, the issue with regards to, uh, why, uh, we have put on the agenda to, um, abolish the planning commission, is because of the fact that, um, uh, there's been, uh, recent activity to try to do this master plan. Master plan has to be approved by the planning commission. While we have a planning commission on the books.
We don't have a planning commission.
We cannot do a, a, we cannot do a, uh, a, a master plan without going through the planning commission. Uh, so even if he's accurate, we really do need to abolish the ordinance today.
In order to get.
In order to get the master plan, because without the planning commission, then the Board of County Commissioners does sit as the planning board for the county. And so therefore, you can then, um, go forward with adopting the, uh, the master plan, uh, that's been trying to work its way, uh, through the system.
Yes, I understood the intent and the purposes. I only have one other question for you on this, since they're allowing me the floor. On the bill itself, in the backup, it has whereas, whereas, now therefore, and it says ordained as follows, nothing follows.
Nothing follows?
Nothing follows, what follows?
Story of my life. Nothing follows.
Let me pull it up, I.
I'm gonna put that on my.
Says now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Knight, State of Nevada, does hereby ordain as follows.
Nothing follows.
Yeah, because it's repealed.
As follows, and then it, then it has a, a title again that says Knight County Code Chapter Two.
Is hereby repealed.
Point one two is hereby repealed in its entirety. Oh, and that's it? Yeah. That's the entire thing.
That is it.
Sorry, the two separate pages had me fooled.
Wow.
Okay, then I'm happy, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
So are you making a motion to adopt, or did we have the public hearing?
Public hearing is still open.
Mr. Chairman.
Any but, any other public hearing? Closed public hearing?
Yeah, my question is, what was our population in 2000?
Is this a trivia question?
Was it? The whole county was thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, then some change, I.
And, and, and according to our DA, then the current numbers don't take effect till July?
July 1st, that's correct.
Okay, so we're right in the middle of, okay.
And Dan, I have all those numbers in the office for you.
Just wanted to be clear.
Motion, motion to adopt.
Second.
With an effective date of May 2nd.
I have a comment on that. I double-checked with Mr. Coonsy on that effective date, and we actually cannot make it effective until May 6th, Wednesday.
Okay, then I'll amend my motion to adopt.
Amend my second.
Bill 2011 oh five with an effective date of May 6th.
Amended second.
I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Easley, an amended motion to adopt Bill.
Is your mic off?
To adopt Bill, uh, 2011 dash oh five with effective date of May 6th, 2011, uh, second, by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, we'll go to, uh, I should make this the last one, but I won't. Eleven fifteen timed item, presentation of teen, uh, participation and award in the 2010 PACE Prevent All Crash Every Day Program.
I should have held that to last, but.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Paula Cooper with the Knight County Sheriff's Office, C-O-O-P-E-R. Uh, we wanted to let you know how we turned out with the PACE program. Uh, we tried to do this every year before you guys. For those that don't know, the PACE program is Prevent All Crashes Every Day. It's a state, uh, competition, and it's sponsored by the Office of Traffic Safety, with additional sponsorships by the UNLV Safe Community Partnership, Driver's Edge, and Farmers Insurance. And what the program is, is teen drivers being the ones that have the highest accident rate for the state, they wanted to do something so that the kids could create a safe driving message, and the message would be from teens to teens. And part of that, they create a safe driving message with a group of friends in all different formats. Um, it is later used as media throughout the state. The second part of the phase, or the competition, is for them to go through a Driver's Edge program, where they learn safety points on a vehicle, controlled skids, defensive and offensive driving. Um, we do a Fatal Vision Olympics with them, where they wear the Fatal Vision Drunk Goggles, and they have to perform tasks so that they can experience what it's like, you know, to do these tasks with a.
Being impaired.
Yeah, simulated impairment. And then they also get to watch their friends' actions as they're doing it also. So they, they use a lot, or they learn a lot of different safe driving, uh, practices, and the big thing with Driver's Edge is they believe that they're teaching those participants how to drive, how to actually drive, and not just to pass the test. So, this being a state competition, they're graded and given points for their safe driving message and for going through the Driver's Edge, and the top one hundred teens get to go to Disneyland for the weekend, and we have an awards ceremony there. So I've brought, um, a couple things to show you from that.
She's on.
Number two.
So this is the logo for PACE. Uh, Driver's Edge that they go through. These are the teens that participated, uh, that qualified through the, they had, they entered a successful safe driving message which qualified them to go to Driver's Edge. Uh, this is the second year that Tonopah High School has participated, and that's how many students we had. This is the first year that Beatty High School got involved in the program.
Wow.
And then Perump Valley High School. So this is how many kids. We had over a hundred teens this year, which was three times the amount of Las Vegas high schools.
Really?
Right, that's population of one point nine million, and Knight County actually surpassed them by double the amount of, but tri- triple?
Triple.
Triple the amount of teens that we have.
That is wonderful.
Yeah, and Knight County Sheriff's Office and the community supports this program, and to help with Paula Cooper, uh, we got a lot of buy-in from our teens. So we should be very proud of that. We, we smoke Las Vegas.
Yeah. It's, uh, Fatal Vision goggles, is that what you call them?
Yeah, here's a couple pictures from that.
I have those. Bottom of my.
They had to walk a straight line wearing the goggles. Once they walked the straight line, they had to get on a scooter and go through some cones. They had to, uh, put a helmet on, do some jump rope, and then stand and hold their foot up for five seconds. And this was all timed for them to go through this, so they had a lot of fun doing it. Um, this is one of the teams that I wanted to highlight, Easy Mac with their participants. They won several awards, the Fatal Vision Olympics, they came in second place, they got an honorable mention on the video that I'm gonna show you in just a second. Um, the Lead Foot Award for Elliot Owens, he, one of the activities that they have to do out there, they go through basically an obstacle course driving, and they have to go through cones, they have to get up to a certain speed without going over a speed, and then they have to park in reverse, and they, they just have to do several different things. Well, he went through it the fastest. And he actually set a, an all-time record. Uh, the best at a forty-five, or no, it was fifty seconds is a good average time for that to be done, and he did it in like forty-two seconds.
So, and, uh, Lieutenant Ramon, we, the Knight County Sheriff's Office take, brings these people through, uh, a, you know, Spring Mountain, and they, we actually run it through the courses that we teach our deputies. So, they get out of exposure and safe driving and proper vehicle handling.
And a big thing that the kids really enjoy out at Driver's Edge is all the instructors that they have out there while they're doing all of these different things, they're all current or previous race car drivers.
Oh.
NASCAR, and the, I don't know all the, I'm not a race person. But they're all professional race car drivers, so they have a good time. So this is just a quick video, um, for what they did, their safe driving message. And it's not showing up.
Looks like the Tonopah Commissioner.
That looks like the Tonopah Commissioner's camera.
No, why it's not? I don't know.
It's a.
Is it down there now?
You had it.
It was.
You had it.
It was there. Now it's not.
Well, you clicked it off.
Is there an eleven-year-old in the audience?
Check your contact cable. Make sure this is sending video. Yeah, we need an eleven-year-old.
Go back to one.
To the first.
Hey, go back to, yeah, punch one.
That's not the computers.
Okay, it's showing now. There we go, whoa.
Gone again.
Well.
Is there a feed in there, okay?
Hmm? It's this one. It played on Thursday night.
Please find a ten-year-old.
What's this?
No.
Does this cord need to be plugged into some?
Yeah, if, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have had, uh, other picture for some reasons kicking off.
Where's our IT department when we need them?
Yeah.
Here's Liz. Here's Liz. So, so our, our high school students are better at drunk driving then, is that? Somebody.
What was that?
I said, so our high school students are better at drunk driving. Turn left.
Okay, what you're doing now, we're going to, uh, item nine, consent. Consent, agenda item, there are items that staff recommended for approval. The Board reserves the right to move any consent agenda item to the regular segment of the agenda should issues arise that need to be addressed.
Yeah, and I believe you were asked to pull a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, but.
Mr.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd like H pulled. For discussion.
Mr. Wickman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a question on L. O. P is in Paul. A comment for Q. Comment on R. And T.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, N?
It's already pulled.
N is? Oh, okay.
N, no.
N like Nancy?
No. Uh-uh.
M?
No, it hasn't.
N like Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy.
Okay.
No, it hasn't.
No, it's not. She said L, O, Q, R, and T.
I got it, because you told me earlier.
Oh, okay.
All right, she told you earlier, I told you.
I got it under control.
All right.
Great, well, let's go. As soon as the ten-year-old fixes this.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through G, I through K, M, P, S, and U.
P, I had a question on, Joni.
I'm sorry, which one?
P is in Paul.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay. Minus P.
Minus T?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Easley to approve, uh, consent agenda.
Did you get those, Sam?
A through G, I through K, M, S, and U. Second by Commissioner Shinoffin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Are you ready yet? Okay, we'll go to nine eight. Action approval to purchase a seven-hundred-and-fifty-gallon double-well wasted oil tank and material needed for installation at the new equipment service shop located at 871 Boot Hill, Perump, Nevada, now to receive an amount of forty-four thousand three hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read into the record that the funding is from the bond proceeds ultimately. This does not have any effect on the general fund?
That's not, that's not why I pulled it.
Bond pro. Bond proceeds cannot be redirected to the general operations of county business, of which most payroll is a part. I pulled it for this discussion also. So that was my comment. I wanted that read into the record, that this has no effect on one-on-one.
All right, sorry for interrupting. You done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, the reason I asked to have that pulled, I was gonna ask Mr. Jones to explain, um, uh, what this tank does and what savings will occur from it, because I thought the public may want to know that.
Yes, this building has a, a waste oil heater rather than propane.
Right.
And this will allow us to collect an additional seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons during the summer for the winter months. Uh, and I think that will handle, uh, Commissioner Wickman's.
I had no concerns, I just wanted that to be part of.
Okay, it, it is part of the building heating system ultimately.
Yeah, but my concern was that, that, you know, that it, this is actually gonna give us a, a cost savings measure, measure by storing the oil, because when I read the, the item, I didn't quite understand it, but then when, after I talked to you, I fully understood.
Yeah, that's correct. I think we're gonna have about twelve thousand dollars in this waste oil system, and probably within the second year, we will have saved more than what propane would have cost if we had a propane heater.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor.
And it received a second.
Did you second that?
Yes, I did.
I have a motion by Commissioner Easley to approve, second by, uh, Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion?
Your microphone's off, Gary.
Further discussion? Call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes, uh, five zero.
Thank you.
Did, uh, did you pull I? No.
Actually, it was.
M?
L.
Okay, L.
However.
Somebody pulled M too, because I got it. Uh, nine, L is action approval to accept a grant award from Nevada Commission on Economic Development, Local Development Grant Program, to support economic development initiatives from July 1st, 2010, to June 2011, in the amount of seventy thousand dollars.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, on this one, I had that pulled for a question, however, my question was answered last night, I'm sorry for the inconvenience.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Easley to approve, second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Item M. Action approval to enter into a new three-year agreement with Frontier Communications for telephone service related to Knight County's 911 system, and to accept a one-time payment from AT&amp;T in the amount. to Nye County's nine-one-one system and to accept a one-time payment from AT&amp;T in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
Mr. Chairman, I think M was already approved.
Yeah.
N was.
Well, I got it marked here.
No.
N, N was.
It was N like Nancy.
Okay, uh, we'll go to N, action approval to seek a bid for, uh, the construction of, uh, the intersection improvement and insulation of a permanent traffic signal at SR one-sixty and Homestead and Windery Road.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I asked to have this pulled, so, uh, Mr. Fanning could explain to us, uh, the temporary light and what N dot requires, because I've had a lot of questions about the temporary light.
For the fifteenth time, explain it to us, Dave.
Yes.
For five years now, we've been going through this process. Um, it has been five years, but, uh, two and a half years has actually been under the temporary signal that is currently out there stretched across the highway. And, uh, obviously, in order for it to go full-time, you will actually see it treated as a three-seventy-two and one-sixty or basin and one-sixty intersection as well, with all the mast arms as they are in their current state. The temporary must go away, and that is actual, a temporary guideline across the highway, so it's, it's something that cannot stay there. They didn't want it to stay there more than six months. However, we've been through this process, so that's the reason why it stayed there for two and a half years.
Is that N dot or an MUTCD?
It is a N dot regulation.
Thank you so much.
I know it stayed, it stayed up for a long time. Ain't caused no problem.
Yes, it did. Actually, a month into it, we actually had a high wind load come by and snap two power lines together, twenty-five KVA, dropped one line, dropped it right down on that main, uh.
Wow.
Temporary line, and a ball of fire went all the way across that whole entire intersection and knocked out four or five traffic lights.
Wow.
This is a month right after we actually put it up, so, yeah, we have had quite a few issues with it.
Motion to approve.
Wind load, second, most of all.
I have a motion by Commissioner Easley to approve, second by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Go ahead.
Can I jump in there? I apologize. I forgot to actually mention in the road report, as of Monday.
Hold on one minute. Can I get this over and then I'll let you do this?
Yes, sir.
I have a mo, I have.
You already called for the vote.
Okay, call.
You did. You said any opposed.
Any opposed? I pass this five zero. Go ahead.
Monday, we officially received the actual encroachment permit to build that intersection in its final state. We are actually going to submit to purchasing next week, obviously, the bid package, and hopefully, within thirty days, we should actually have an award coming before the board to actually award it, and hopefully, within about June, the end of June, should be actually building that intersection.
Yay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Okay, somebody pulled O?
Yes, I had a.
Nine O, action approval for renewal of ESRI license agreement, which provides mapping and tracking, uh, criminal activity within Nye County in the amount of one thousand dollars.
But, Mr. Beck is not here. And Tony, there, there's Tony. I only had a comment, okay? We're looking for every dime to keep within our budget on 101. So, just as encouragement, have us, have everybody within the county, this isn't directed at you, this is everybody. Needs to be creative when they start identifying funding sources.
Hi, and, no, no, and I have to apologize, I was not aware that Captain Beck wasn't gonna be here to address that.
Well, we probably outweighed him. I think he was, I think we outweighed him. He was here earlier. So, it's just an observation. I'll motion to approve.
Second. And what, what was your concern? I'm not sure.
I want everybody to be creative when they're looking for funding sources on this stuff. I realize it's a.
Pass the hat next time.
Uh, actually, we'll do that. We'll actually, I would think about doing a road, a tour, a toll road up in one-sixty Claw County, but we couldn't get anybody who wants to pay to get it back in Claw County.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Easley, would you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
I told him, pass the hat next time.
Yeah. Hold a bake sale.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I add one thing? This is a software package that is used in the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is the licensing agreement which enables us to continue using it and not replace it.
Used in the general fund?
Yes, it's used by the sheriff's office out of the general fund.
And it didn't say on there, I didn't, I didn't think it said on there whether or not it was budgeted. It looked to me like.
Yeah, it's budgeted.
It is.
It's funded from Fund 101.
I know where it's funded from. What I was looking for was.
And that's where it has historically been funded, yeah. Just to clarify.
Thanks, Pam, appreciate it.
I'm just trying to pass on a message that all of us need to be working together, be looking for.
Of course.
Yes.
No problem. Appreciate you, Commissioner, thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, second by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. Item, uh, nine P, action approval of change order number two to the, uh, contract between Nye County and Tyler Technologies for a new financial software package for the county for an additional twenty-eight hours of onsite payroll processing review, uh, four thousand two hundred dollars.
And, Mr. Chairman, and to the rest of the commissioners as well, as, as well as staff, the reason I'm making these comments is because of phone cons, phone conversations I've had or emails I've received. So, I'm, I'm not trying to pound an issue home, but I want it on the record as well that four ninety-one cannot be used for general fund operations, for general county business. And it cannot supplement 101. With that said and on the record, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, second by Commissioner, uh, Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Item Q.
I'm sorry, thank you guys for bearing with me.
Huh?
Thank you for bearing with me.
Action, uh, approval to change order number one to the contract of Leighton Construction Company for construction manager at risk, uh, service, uh, for the construction of new county jail to add the project pick list in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents.
Once again, for the record, bond proceeds are not to be used specifically for the jail, or this, bond proceeds are to be used specifically for the jail. I believe when the board chose this funding source, the board had no choice but to approve construction of the new jail facility. This cannot be used to balance 101 shortfalls, but this project does provide some employment in Nye County. With that, motion to approve.
I guess I am missing the point of all of these clarifications.
I am receiving telephone calls and emails of people wanting to know why we are building and continuing to improve infrastructure and spend money on items when we're considering laying off everybody.
Okay, I get it.
So, it's.
Are any of those people who complained to you in the audience? Just curious. If the, and the only reason I ask that is if they are that concerned, are they hearing this message live as you're delivering it?
I think somewhere earlier. I think somewhere earlier.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, uh, who seconded that?
I think Butch did.
Did you?
Yeah.
Uh, second by Butch Borowski. Commissioner Borowski. Um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero. Nine R, action approval of a contract with Traffic Control Services Incorporated for a monthly rental of equipment to provide traffic control on Black Road in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and four dollars and eighty-three cents.
I also.
Funded out of, uh, two oh five.
And that's, thank you. Not 101, two oh five. Motion to approve.
That was it?
Yep.
Just that you wanted to clarify, it's coming out of the road fund?
Yeah, and I should have just done that by making comments, but when you pass them all, when they're all passed, it's one.
Do you second that, Butch?
Yes, I did, and I commend you for what you're doing.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, second by Commissioner Borowski. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Item nine T, action, or was it, we'll go to nine S. Was S on there, your?
No, T.
T? Action approval to one, reclassify eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents from Project PE one zero one two, uh, Fund four ninety-two settlement agreement, and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents from Project PE ten twelve, funded from 101 General, to be changed to Fund two eighty-four repository project oversight and to increase the Project PE ten twelve in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents for, a project totaling two hundred thousand for the historical minor, minor road, uh, documentation project to document county roads, including minor roads over which historical jurisdiction exists, to help assure public access in the future. Holy smokes. I don't know if I understand this.
Before we proceed with this, Mr. Chairman, I have a correction to this, and Mr. Coonsey, please let me know if we can make this. There was an error, um, in communication on my part when this act, when this was put on the agenda. Section one is correct. Section two should read, increase Project PE one oh one two in the amount of two hundred thousand for a project total of three hundred and eleven thousand, oh twenty-one fifteen. Can we make that correction and?
Yes, all the, all the agenda is required to do is describe the subject matter, not necessarily the specific action to be taken.
Okay. What that does is it, it gives two hundred thousand to the project going forward and also reclassifies from item one the money that's been spent on the project so far. So, if you would, please incorporate that change into your motion.
Thank you very much, Pam. And the only clarification, that was the clarification that I wanted on this. However, I will point out, since I'm pointing out that none of these others affect 101, this is putting money back into 101. Isn't that cool?
Is this, uh, Mr. Chairman, the historical minor roads, does this have to do with the RS two four seven?
Yes.
That's what this is, and that's what I thought.
Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a, I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, second by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Did you get it to work?
I'm told by IT that as long as it's streaming to the other cities, it won't do it.
Okay.
So, I can finish it without the videos and let you guys see the videos at the end of the meeting.
Hold on one minute. We'll go back to our ten, our eleven fifteen item, presentation of team participation and awards in the ten, uh, two thousand and ten page. Go ahead.
The only way, according to IT, for the videos to be shown is if it's being viewed in Perump only. It can't be streamed across to the other, uh, towns, so I can finish the presentation without the videos, let you guys see the videos at the end of the meeting, or they're on the computer that you guys can watch later, one, one or the other.
Thank you.
Finish, go, go ahead.
We would have to disconnect from Tonopah and Beatty and Granicus in order for her to show the video.
Yeah, we know that, but she said she could finish the presentation.
She could finish her presentation.
Yeah, without it.
Yeah, let her finish her presentation.
And this is another team that, uh, got a few awards, Team Carr. This picture up in the top left is actually from a T-shirt that they had made up, uh, that says eliminate tragedy, don't text and drive, and they have a very, very good video that goes along with that message.
What is, uh, Carr an acronym for?
I don't know. I don't have that.
Probably have passed one of them, huh?
Yeah, maybe.
Uh, the overall first place team was from Tonopah.
We lost you.
That should be, okay, now.
We should have had a good chance to win something. We got them two to one.
Yeah.
Um. The teams were allowed to enter as many messages as they wanted, uh, and this team from Tonopah took advantage of that, and they create, they sent in a poster, a video, a PowerPoint, bumper stickers, and they even created, uh, these rubber bracelets. So, they got a lot of points for all their different things, so they were the overall first place winner, um, from Tonopah.
Wonderful.
This was one of the posters that they made. It takes eight thousand, four hundred and sixty bolts to assemble an automobile and one nut to scatter it all over the road.
That's pretty good.
Um, just a couple pictures. These is, these are the kids that qualified to go to Disneyland. Out of the hu, one hundred kids that they state takes to Disneyland, fifty-six of those were from Nye County.
Wow.
So, we, Nye County does very, very well in this program.
Terrific.
Um, the one Beatty team that qualified and the Perump teams that qualified, and then this is the whole group.
So, they've gone already? Have they gone yet?
Yeah, we just went la, uh, the weekend before last.
Was your, one of your kids in, of course, uh?
One of the things, good things about this, commissioners, is that people, the kids from the different high schools get to meet the kids from other different high schools, and they do a lot of networking, which they wouldn't have done before outside this program.
And they really have to work together to create their safe driving message. And they really get the community and their families involved, and that's one of the things I want to say thank you to the community, um, especially the Front Valley Fire and Rescue Service, Desert View Hospital, Nye Regional Medical Center, Two Star, our towing, Auto World, and Front Valley Family Mortuary were all and have been very involved in the last few years. They all come out and support and help them. Oh, yeah, and I have a plaque that if you would take back to Nye Regional.
Sure.
Ms. Cooper, um, what are the requirements for the students who get involved in this? Do they have to be members of a certain school?
No, um, it's a statewide competition, and they must be fifteen and a half years old with a driving permit at a minimum, up to twenty years old, so they just have to be a teen driver. Um, they get a group of four or five kids to, you know, friends together. They create a safe driving message and, uh, complete the driver's edge portion, and then they, everything else is on a point system on whether or not they qualify for the end result. But we've had some of our, um, entries, they play on CW and MyLV TV, some of the videos they're to, put into earned media. Uh, they've had videos shown at the Jumbotron at NASCAR during NASCAR weekend, uh, at the Wrangler hockey games. They, they do the videos up during their breaks and timeouts, and they create bus stop shelter posters, um, all kinds of different media from, from the messages that these kids create.
So, if we had, if we knew of teenagers who were interested in this, who would we tell them to contact?
Me.
And that is how?
Uh, Paula Cooper at the sheriff's office.
Okay. Just at the sheriff's office number.
Yeah, and the, we'll start notifying about November, December again for the following year. But like everything else, uh, the state's funding on this program is getting cut also. Uh, so next year, they know they have some funding, they're not quite sure how much. The following year, though, um, I'm gonna help, ask Rick for the help, and, um, we're gonna try to get some funding and community, Nye County community, uh, sponsorships and run this program for Nye County only. Because we've gotten so big.
Yeah.
We're over half of, there were also teams from Reno, Carson City, and Elko.
But more than half of the total participants came from Nye.
Yeah, if you add all of that, Reno, Elko, Carson City, Las Vegas, we're more than half than all of those cities put together.
Ms. Endersby, what a better way to promote education than to also save the lives of our teenagers.
Paula.
There's one we can get behind.
There were no participants from GABs? I know their high school isn't very big. It's.
We haven't, we didn't, weren't able to reach GABs this year. Um, it is a goal that next year, we, because we keep expanding each year.
Yeah.
No, it just, uh, Tonopah, Beatty, and Perump so far. Uh, but we would like to, to incorporate all.
Oh, that's right, and Round Mountain, I forgot about Round Mountain, too.
And we are reaching out to other communities, it's just we started, you know, we started locally trying to get, you know, a lot of, uh, community buy-in, which we did, and a lot of recognition, which we did, and I understand, we had tripled the amount of teams in Nye County. And I understand, we had tripled the amount of teams in Nye County outside of population one point nine million, which is like what Las Vegas, Clark County is, and the rest of the state combined. You know, you look and say, you know, this very six other programs, so Smoky Valley, GABs, and whatever, wherever kids are, and, and within Nye County communities will definitely be reaching out to this, this coming year to make sure they're part of this, this, this program.
So that sponsorship, does it put money into your funding to do this? You mentioned a whole bunch of people that you were thinking.
Well, it, it goes to the state, yeah. The state that runs this program right now, the, like, Farmers Insurance, through the funding, this program, through grants, you're not allowed to pay for entertainment, which they consider Disneyland in entertainment. They'll pay for food and transportation, they'll pay for the production of all of this media, but like Farmers Insurance, they donate ten thousand dollars, and that pays for the Disneyland tickets. And they get other sponsorships to sponsor, to pay, you know, to feed them while they're at Disneyland, and then we have another sponsor that pays for the awards banquet.
It's wonderful. Well, when you are prepared to come further north from Tonopah, give me a call for that sponsorship.
I'm gonna be, this is one, through the whole next year, I will be coming around to all the businesses and agencies that I can to try and get this so that in two thousand and thirteen, we can run this as a Nye County program, because really, this is the only driver's education that most of these kids get.
Yeah.
You know, and like you said, it's saving lives also.
Amargosa's included in the Beatty High School, am I?
Yes.
Yes.
But it'll be our goal this year, be reaching out to Smoky Valley, GABs, and whatever area we can within, I kind of has teenagers within that age group, and I'll be, I'll come in from the Sheriff's Office this, this coming school year for next year.
Good. Okay, let me know when you come out there and you need help.
We will. Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
And Rick, could, could you send me a, a copy of the numbers on this, as well as the last program you had where you came in first? Because a lot of people that are saying that Nye County and Nevada comes in forty-fifth or higher and everything, your organization has had two first places, as far as I'm concerned, in the last six months.
Yeah, unfortunately, Nye County gets included with the rest of the other sixteen counties in the state, so.
Yeah.
Our shining star is somewhat, you know, overshadowed with other issues with the other counties, but we will making sure of that.
Yeah, but we beat Las Vegas.
Thank you.
So I'll have the videos, I'll leave them on here so that they can be watched at the end or later.
We appreciate the opportunity, Commissioners, to make the presentation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Good job, Paula.
Okay, we'll go to eleven G status, Agency Status Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was neglectful in getting my revision of this in prior to the publishing of the agenda. So there are just a few updates I'd like to give you, on the Community Weed Management Agency and also the Tonopah Conservation District, if I could handle them together. The USDA will be funding half-time employment for this Tonopah Conservation District and the Weed Management Group. Nye County has been asked, and actually, Nye County has an agreement from years ago to provide office space to this organization for a reduced membership. Nye County pays two thousand dollars a year to be involved in these organizations and provides the equivalent of three thousand dollars a year for an office space. So Pam is handling that for us, and within the next month or so, we should probably have a person sitting in that spot, which is gonna be wonderful, because they'll be able to attract some grants for us, and they'll get out and talk to the, they'll be out working with the farmers and ranchers in the area. On the Public Land Steering Committee for, for the National Association of Counties, last week I participated in a conference call where a number of Commissioners throughout the eleven western states are voicing concerns over the Forest System Land Management Planning Rules that were published in the Federal Register on the fourteenth of February. Essentially, right now, I read them, and it's my opinion, that I read the new Forest Management Planning Rules to be another method of enforcing the Wildlands thirty-three-ten. So we are ongoing. We'll continue to have conference calls throughout the next month or so until resolutions are formed for the National Association of Counties to present to the delegation. Minor County Road Inventory, forty roads were gathered in Perump and Amargosa in just the last week alone. I wanted to thank everyone, and some of the people who were here earlier needed to hear this, but hopefully they'll see it on television or on streaming. I wanted to thank them for their help, that they provided to our contractor, they've actually taken her and shown her the roads that have the highest priority to the people here who are using them, and that's really appreciated. On Senate Bill forty-nine, it was unanimously passed out of the Legislative Committee on Transportation, so it's going to the next step. It looks like that's gonna be successful. The Tri-County Weed Group, there was a question a few months back about whether or not we had, we had brought an item several months back, asking the county to accept the financial responsibility for the Tri-County Weed Group, and that was, it didn't come with any financial obligation, other than it would take staff time, and we weren't equipped to do that because we're asking our staff to do three jobs when they used to do one. And the results of that have been, at the most recent meeting, Tina Mudd from the USDA, after consulting with her attorney, it is their legal opinion that the largest county of the group does not have to house the financial activities, but rather the one with the largest treatment area, and with that interpretation, we're off the hook. So it's gonna remain in White Pine County. During the tri-party FIA, of which I should let you report on that one, Joanie, the only thing I wanted to add to that above and beyond what's in the report is that CDs of shape files on the first sixty-six roads that have gone through the Minor County Road Project were delivered to both Forest Service and the BLM. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna, by special request, we're gonna go to twenty-five A. HR. Action to...
Twenty-five.
What?
I'm just repeating.
I said twenty-five A.
Yeah.
Action discussion deliberation, possible decision and direction to staff to authorize the in-house advertising for anticipated deputy justice court clerk position vacant in Front Justice Court and filling of the vacancy once the resignation has been received. Position is budgeted from Fund one oh one.
HR has recommended the filling of this in-house, however, since this agenda item was put on, different budget information has been received, and so in light of that, I need to rescind my recommendation. It's up to you what you're going to be, what you choose to do, but my recommendation is that right now we not fill this, hold off for a month until we know what's gonna go on with the budget. I've talked with Pam Webster, and that was her recommendation as far as budget issues.
No action. Thank you.
I don't know if you've got...
Pam, do you have anything to add to that?
I, I just believe until we have the shortfall resolved and have determined how we're gonna balance the budget, it doesn't make sense to be filling positions right now.
I agree. Thank you. Commissioners?
Just recommend we take, recommend we take no action on this at this time. It's not a motion, just...
That's right.
No action. No motion coming forward.
Which then would allow me to come back at a point.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna make a motion to deny it. Just, there's no... Yes, Brian?
It should work.
No.
You're gonna have to table it if, because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Can you table that for a month?
You can table for as long as you want to table it.
Indefinitely. Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shinhop to table this item, second by Commissioner Eastley. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Item twenty-five B, Action Discussion, Deliberation, Possible Decision and Direction to Staff to Authorize the In-House Advertising and Filling of One Vacant Deputy Recorder's Position in Tonopah Recorder's Office. This position will become vacant April twentieth, twenty-eleven. This position is budgeted from Fund one oh one general.
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shinhop to table, second by Commissioner Eastley. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dan Sweeney from the Town Around Mountain's been here since, well, since last night, but waiting, since this morning for thirty-two A, if we could go?
Yes.
He's got a four-hour drive back.
Thirty-two A, Action Discussion, Deliberation, and Possible Decision to Approve Funding for the Town of Round Mountain to Help With the Expansion of Public Safety Building Located at Hazardous Division Round Mountain in the Amount of two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, which has not been budgeted. Dan?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dan Sweeney, S-W-E-E-N-Y. I'm the town manager out in Round Mountain.
And the fire chief and the water department manager.
Yeah, I wear a few hats out there. First off, I'd like to apologize to Pam. It's been several years since I've tried to get something on the agenda, and I guess I just didn't know the policy at this time, so I tried to get it on the last agenda and apologized to your staff also for me. We've been working on this project out there, saving our money for several years. It's been on our capital improvement list for over, well, since two thousand and seven. In the backup, it, it failed to say that we've already budgeted five hundred thousand dollars towards this project for next fiscal year, and we're asking for upwards of a third of this project to expand out our meeting and training room, our bloodborne room, and then also in two thousand and nine, after several years of working with Nye County and the ambulance service, we actually moved an ambulance into the subdivision and have proven at that time that it's worked very well. It's cut the response times down to three to five minutes and worked very closely with Brent and his staff and the...
You know what? We, when I was on the board, the Round Mountain Town Board, ten years ago, we talked about doing that and could never get it done.
Climate has changed out there a little bit. We were able to work with Brent and Jessica Musselman and Patty Winters.
That's terrific, yeah.
And it, and it has worked out very well. What we're looking at doing is, is gonna expand out, not only in our meeting room, our bloodborne room and the rest of that stuff, but also to put a bay on the end of that building also to house the ambulance out there, because it's in the firehouse now. They really don't have their own identity out there, and I just wanna make it very clear that the Town of Round Mountain does not want to run an ambulance, has no intention of running the ambulance for the county, but we support the ambulance and the people out there, and we're willing to support them to the tune of them coming into the building, using our facilities, we'll pay for all the heat, pay for all the utilities, we'll, we'll do that, provide them office space, rooms, and just with a simple MOU, I think we can accomplish this.
But you don't have room for them.
We don't, we, we do have the room for them right now, but they're, they're kinda segregated, they're down there in the valley. They have the building down there, I think it was built in nineteen sixty. Miranda, Joanie, you're very familiar with that old building, and it's served its purpose well, but I think by bringing it together like we did in Tonopah, putting these people together, you know, we could achieve a better working relationship.
Dan, didn't you also assume responsibility for the Smoky Valley Volunteer Fire Department?
Yes, we have assumed over through the Round Mountain to take over that end of the valley. Brent and I worked, we worked very closely with the county out there, haven't had any problems working with them, and you guys have been very supportive of us, and we've been very supportive of you guys also. I mean, we'll do what it takes to take care of the people, and I think that's where we're out there, is we, I think our mindset, at least in the fire department and the town, is we wanna take care of the people, patient care and life property out there first. And I know, Joanie, when you were on our board, I mean, that's the first thing that we did, is set up our fire department out there. The buildings and everything else went away, it was public safety first. We've come back to that now. We have the buildings, we have the stuff in place, we do have the money this year to go ahead with this project, and I, and I'm not asking you to fund it out of one oh one. I would not ask that, out of one oh one, guaranteed.
So Dan, the, the town board?
That's, that's what I'm asking you, Pam.
The town board is...
I have numbers.
The town board is committing a half a million dollars?
Yes, we are. In this budget, we are shuffling money around. I did have some money funded this year, but I've waited too long, and, and time is of the essence. I mean, down here, you can build all year long. Out there in the valley, we only have certain months that we can build out there, so I'd like to get the project going.
June.
Yeah, June, July. I'd like to get the project going and bring back an accurate figure, and, and in the past, we've done it in such a way that the town has gone out, advertised a bid, ran it through their place, everything else. We sat down with the, the bid people, or the successful bidder, we sat down with them in the past and worked through it, and then we spend our money first, and they know at the end of the project, they have to build Nye County for the remainder of that, and it's worked well on our gymnasium. I know when we did it through the county, and I would offer, you know, Brent to sit down and in that discussion, to sit down with the building when we spec it all out, I'd be happy to do that, I've done it in the past. I think in two thousand and five, I came in and asked for an expansion on the building. You guys were fortunate enough to give me a fire truck, so I put the expansion on through the town that way, so we've worked in the, in the past.
So let me ask you then, Dan, if you don't know what the cost of construction is, is it premature to come and ask for...
Actually, those, the set of plans, I had two set of plans, I, I worked with the contractor out there in two thousand and nine. He gave, he did give me a preliminary set, working with him. Since then, he has passed away.
Yes, Jim Christmas.
Yes.
That was, I was shocked.
He was one of the guys that built a lot of buildings, knew what it take to build for Round Mountain.
For Round Mountain, yeah. We did them all design-build.
Yes, and, and unfortunately, he did, but before, he left in two thousand and nine, I'm not saying it's gonna be that high, because right now it's so competitive out there. I, I've done some stuff in the past in front of the Simpson Center where you guys were at a couple weeks ago. For an example, the cement came in at thirty-five thousand dollars one year, didn't have the money in there, rebudgeted for forty thousand, and came in the next year at twenty-one thousand, and...
Everybody's hungry.
Everybody's hungry, so we're not really sure, but I, I'd like to run it through the board and, and do it that way and, and work with Brent and, and him. I mean, they did a great job in Tonopah accomplishing that, and we're looking to similar to do that.
So you're looking at, if you're putting up a half a million dollars of your own money, and, and you want two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand from the county, that's three quarters of a million dollars. That's a huge expansion.
Yes, it's going out another fifty feet by forty feet on the meeting room with bloodborne rooms, three offices, two more bathrooms, because when we do large meetings or large trainings down there, we're in the bays, we're in the different places, and sometimes we do, you know, thirty-five, forty, forty people out there for hazardous materials training and stuff like that.
Oh, that's right, you guys are the Northern Area Hazmat.
We, we are the Northern Area Hazmat Team also for Nye County, and, and now we have our stuff separated. We have some of the stuff at Carver's Barn, it works out well down there, but then we're...
Carver's Bar?
Yeah.
Barn. Oh, barn, barn, okay.
Well, barn bar, it could be either.
The barn would be more fun.
Dan, is there, is there any way that we can hold off on this until, for thirty days or so, to see how this budget is gonna go?
Most definitely. I didn't think I was gonna come down here and get in a...
I know she's giving me the wiggle eye over there.
It's not that it's not a worthy project.
I, I understand that.
You know where my heart is.
I, I've, I've waited, you know, I've, I've seen it over the years, I, and this is a beautiful building, I've seen what you guys have been able to accomplish, and we've been saving our money, so I didn't see anything on it.
It's all about save and plan.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on there this year, but I also didn't expect a five-point three million deficit that you guys were going through, you know, so maybe I'd have came in last year a little bit quicker.
Yeah, we saw your ending fund balance, we'd like to borrow from you.
We're still saving. For a mine closure date, I guess. But I, I appreciate it, I don't know if Brent has anything to say.
Well, I know everyone's seen who's in the audience in Tonopah, Jessica Musselman is, raise your hand, Jessica. That's our ambulance coordinator in Smoky Valley, and she does a phenomenal job keeping that group going, and she was here to help with this item, and Patty Winters behind her. She's our ambulance coordinator for the Nye County. I wanna thank them both for sticking in here today to help with this item, and it's a great project, and like you say, hopefully we can work something out in the future.
What can you do with a half a million dollars, Dan?
I'm gonna stretch it as far as I can, I'll tell you that. You know, I will, maybe the second story will be gone, maybe, you know, still...
I know where you can get some big rocks. I know where you can get some big rocks.
You want to buy some?
No, I got one out here.
No, we make them up there. You know, so...
We take big rocks and turn them into gold.
Yeah, we turn them into little rocks.
We got big rocks, and we cut a nice little rock out there.
I'm curious about something, too. You talked about building on another bay?
Yes.
And that would be to house...
The ambulance, it actually, it'll have two bays in there. It'll house one ambulance and whatever else we have. I have two hazmat trailers that are sitting outside right now.
Okay, that's...
I have four-wheelers.
So, it's to house Nye County equipment?
Nye County equipment, Town around Mountain equipment. We've got it all, so we're together now. I mean, it's...
So, the ambulance, the only Nye County equipment is the ambulance or is the hazmat?
The hazmat trucks belong to Nye County?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that belongs to you guys. We have one engine out there now. We have the hazmat truck. We have the rescue, heavy rescue is underneath your guys' insurance, half the brush truck. We paid for the cab. You guys paid for the back. You have two trailers, some of the equipment in there, working with Brent. I mean, if we go away, it's all going to come back to the county no matter what.
So, you're paying a half a million, you're putting up a half a million dollars to build something to house our equipment?
Correct.
That you're using?
And we're using and training and affording Nye County also the training facility. And like you say, there'll only be a few rules. The MOU will dictate that, what it's out, what it takes, you know, to do that. So, I'm just here to ask that now in thirty days, hopefully, maybe even forty-five days so I could be in Tonopah a little closer to home. We could maybe have this discussion again.
Okay. Maybe in the meantime, you can use that time to get some details?
I could go, definitely, I can go out and get a little more concrete information.
You know what killed, and I'm preaching to the choir, what kills us on those projects and always has? Davis Bacon. We have to pay Las Vegas prevailing wages in Smoky Valley.
Correct. Actually, ours are ran off in Smoky Valley off the test site, which are still high.
Yeah.
You know, when we did that. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Dan, if you could give me a spend plan, just a rough idea of how long you think your construction's going to last?
You bet.
And what you think your monthly spend plan would be?
You bet.
That would help me because we've got a real time, real constraint with capital.
Sure. Sure, I can definitely sit down with the contractor, and I was going to do...
Rough, I mean, it doesn't even have to be real precise.
Yeah.
If you think you've got an eighteen-month or a fourteen-month construction...
This will be done in four months out in the valley.
Okay, well, that won't help me.
If we need to stretch it out a little further, we can do that, or wait till the following spring, you know, a year from now, we could actually start it. But, you know, just so I know that we do have it coming in, and I can assure my board that we're going forward with this, you know?
Dan, would you take a message back to your volunteers? You guys have been wonderful, considerate partners. You've done everything you can to help us be successful, and what that's done is to make you successful.
I appreciate that.
We really appreciate that.
And I've got to rely on also Round Mountain Gold because I have a very good working relationship with them again, and they allow our volunteers to come off that property and be successful because it's their people out there also. So, it's a partnership, not only with the county, but Round Mountain Gold and the people out there. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
If you've never been to Round Mountain and gone into Dan's station at Round Mountain, you can eat off the floor.
Yeah, you can.
It's amazing. He sets a standard for that type of situation, and we're greatly appreciative for that type of professionalism.
Well, it is in very many volunteer fire departments that has to turn away volunteers.
Do you need a table?
Table?
Why would you want to eat off the floor? You guys...
That's a...
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we've...
Would it be, would it be very immature of me if I went, "That's where I come from"?
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
We've got several people here that have been waiting all day on thirteen A.
Yeah? Jesus, I tell you. Okay, thirteen A.
You need a tranquilizer dart. That's what you need.
Trying to keep track of an agenda. Thirteen A. District Attorney. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to take all legal action necessary to enforce provision of a subdivision improvement, maintenance, and warranty agreement for Shawnee
Would you like to give you some background on where we're at with this?
Well, yeah, it's under District Attorney.
As the Commissioners, I'm sure, are aware, one of the complicating factors is that Shawnee Ridge is currently involved in litigation with UICN. I want to make it very clear that we are not participating. We have nothing to do with the litigation between those two parties. And, you know, the problem that we're having, obviously, with the economic situation, we have a number of developments that have stalled in this valley, so it's certainly not unique for, you know, the issues that we see with Shawnee Ridge. The one problem that we do have with Shawnee Ridge is that during the development, and again, they, from what I've been able to pull together, they were issued will-serv letters by UICN when they paid a deposit with them. Now, we have development agreement with Shawnee Ridge, Pomp eighty-eight, more accurately, this company that we have the development agreement with. They have a development agreement with UICN. With that will-serv letter, houses were constructed, and Nye County actually issued certificates of occupancy for ten houses that were constructed in this development. I believe, if the number's correct, I think there's currently seven houses occupied. I think there's seven houses that are occupied in that development. Where the problem arose is several months after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, UICN terminated water service to these residences, and these residents have now been without water sewer service since that time. There's also an action pending before the Public Utilities Commission on an action filed by one of the homeowners who has an interest, I think, in four of the model homes or, he just won, but it's part of, it's part of four of the model homes that were initially put out there. They're still working through that whole process, but unfortunately, that still leaves us with several houses that we have residents that do not have water service. Back in February of two thousand and seven, this board entered into a subdivision improvement, maintenance, warranty agreement with Pomp eighty-eight, requiring that they perform water sewer systems, street improvements, and be completed within three years. In October, October twelfth of two thousand and ten, last year, Mr. Fanning issued a notice of default on them not completing the necessary water sewer system, street improvements within the three years as provided in the subdivision improvement and maintenance warranty agreement. In the notice of default, it indicated that thirteen percent of the sewer and water improvements had not been finished, forty-two percent of the dry utilities, and the vast bulk of the default was seventy-two percent of the roadway improvements, which includes road base, curb gutter, asphalt, stripping and striping and signage. Also, and I don't know the exact date, but at one point in time, Pomp eighty-eight had requested and was granted a twenty-five percent reduction in the original bond amount. So, twenty-five percent has been released from the bond based upon the improvements that they had previously constructed. It's been an issue that I know has been confronting this board for some time. The questions have been raised and, which brings us to the point of what do we do with this particular project? You know, I was asked to look into it to see what our legal recourse could be. And again, particularly since in this particular case, it's unique in that we do not have any other developments that have stalled that actually have homeowners living there without sewer and water. So, that really puts us into a very unique category.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why would we have granted certificates of occupancy if we knew there was no utility service there?
There was initially. That's the whole point was we were led to believe that there were connections. Again, there were will-serv letters that were provided. So, from Nye County standpoint, we were, we were believed that, you know, that those houses could be occupied. And again, the service was not cut off for several months after that point in time, and it's turned into, and again, I don't want to, we're not involved in litigation, but it really has turned into a fight between UICN and Pomp eighty-eight over who supposedly violated their development agreement between the two of them. And so, there's a financial fight between UICN and Pomp eighty-eight, and unfortunately, the county and these homeowners are the ones kind of caught in the crossfires. And so, the question is, how do we remedy that situation? So, again, when I was tasked with looking at this, you know, certainly, one of the options that we looked at was what would be the benefit of calling in the bond as we certainly have the legal capabilities of doing? That would permit us to have the work completed? And then the question is...
For us to have the work completed?
We could, yes. If we called in the bond, we could have the work completed. And then the question comes in, is that really going to solve the problem that we have with Shawnee Ridge? And it's been a very interesting process that I've gone through. I spent an awful lot of time examining records from the testimony and everything that's coming before the PUC with the hearing that's presently there. And I think that, again, you know, it's easy to say they're in default and call in the bond.
And Brian, two questions. What would lead us to believe that we could have the work completed if they can't get the work completed? And would, considering the fact that we've already granted a twenty-five percent reduction of the original bond, is there money remaining to complete, to do the completions?
There is. And if I could explain that where I see from the testimony before the PUC and where we stand with this, I think your questions are right on point. Because again, if you look at it, really, the issues that we have is with the sewer and water being unfinished, and we're only talking thirteen percent of the entire project. The sewer line that actually services the ten houses we have are in place. And I think that the Public Utilities Commission staff, the Public Utilities Commission engineer have all offered testimony in the case that basically indicates that once that line is inspected, service should be able to be restored to those ten houses. And that's kind of, again, where the battle is there with PUC. So, initially, again, it's easy to say that they're in default, but I think the thing that's troubled me in analyzing the legal issues here is the fact that, as an example, us completing the road base, curb gutter, asphalt, striping, and signage, how is that going to advance what our real problem is? And I think the other problem that it creates is, are we really going to spend the amount of money to put roads and streets and sidewalks and gutters into a development that we don't know how long it's going to take for that development to take off again and become productive? And there's been actually some very interesting testimony from the PUC engineer and staff that basically, you know, they're recommending to the PUC that none of that work be done, that, you know, when you look at...
Who's recommending to the PUC?
The PUC engineer.
Oh, the PUC engineer.
Engineer's staff. And really, what they're indicating is that if you're putting in paving on roads and undeveloped streets, it causes problems when you then start with new construction when the subdivision gets going. You now have potential for repairs that have to be done because of the construction traffic that's going to be on those roads. And the other problem that we have from a county standpoint and, you know, speaking with Mr. Fanning, our Public Works Director, you know, we're now going to have streets and sidewalks and gutters sitting out there that are just simply going to deteriorate. And then, you know, if we're spending money now to do something, what is going to be our return in the future? Where this becomes an interesting point is that one of the main issues in the PUC matter has been the fact that UICN is contending that according to their corporate policies, and that's the word that they've used in their filings, is that the paving of the roads is instrumental in the integrity of their sewer system. And on that point alone, PUC engineers are adamantly opposed, basically saying that there is absolutely no engineering reason why roads have to be paved. Their argument is that the asphalt basically acts as a cap over their trench, and therefore would be necessary. Now, the thing is, the, once again, the part of the road in which these houses are existing, the ten houses, that road is complete. It is asphalted. So, again, the question is, is that is it really economically wise, or stated more differently, would it be economic waste really for this commission to declare a default and basically then have us go out and do the bulk of work, being the construction of the roads in this particular subdivision?
Where there are no houses.
Where there are no houses and...
And no plans.
No plans, and again, they're just going to sit there and deteriorate. The other problem is that I've just recently learned and becoming more involved in what's happening with the PUC, is that the other major conflict that we see in the PUC hearings is a fight over the requirement in the development agreement between UICN and Pomp eighty-eight.
And that's our DA development agreement?
No, 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 their development agreement.
Their development agreement, okay.
Yeah, their development. So, this is the party's development agreement between UICN and Pomp eighty-eight. Their agreement provided for four houses, four model homes to be connected without anything else being done. Above four houses, Pomp eighty-eight developer had agreed to install a well. And then, once they got above forty connections, then Pomp eighty-eight would be obligated to install a storage tank. And so, part of the fight in what we're...
That was their agreement with UICN to put in the well?
After forty.
After four houses?
After, yeah, after four houses, any connections above four houses would require a well, and then above forty would require a storage tank.
Is there a well there?
No. No. And therein lies the problem when I start digging into this, is that if UICN in front of the PUC is arguing that they cannot provide service to this area, these ten homes, without a well and without a storage tank, unfortunately, our bond has absolutely nothing to do with the construction of a well or a storage tank.
Right.
So, quite frankly, I'm very concerned in, again, having gone through this and learned it and the positions that are being taken, I quite frankly think it would be folly for us to declare a default on this bond, to go in and do any work that is not going to advance the problems that we have.
So, the staff recommendation in the backup is to proceed forward with calling in the bond?
And that was originally when we put this together. And again, that's...
Well, and you're basing your opinion on more information that you've received since submitting the item, okay?
Okay. Commissioner Reske has a question.
Yes. I'd like to make a small disclosure that I've talked to some of these different people, trying to gather information on this, and if you'd like, I'll give you all the names. Mr. Scott, Mr. Brock, Senator McGinnis, Assemblyman Goodheart, Senator Lee, Wendy Arnett a few minutes this morning, Mel Pete, and Jim Riggs. Jim Riggs is the owner of the one home that's closest to Wilson Road. And I've also contacted several people at the Public Utilities Commission, and when we're ready and after we hear public comment and everything, I think I'd... And when we're ready and after we hear public comment and everything, I think I'd like to make the motion. I've got an idea of how we can help move forward on this.
Well, can you share that with us now?
Well, unfortunately, I think I know where he's going to go, and I unfortunately have to apologize because I violated my number-one cardinal rule in drafting an agenda, and that is not to be too specific. Unfortunately, when we were putting this together-
I cannot believe you broke that rule.
I, you know, I-
That was from hanging out with Dave for those late nights.
Yeah. I'm not afraid of admitting my mistakes, but unfortunately, because of the way the agenda item was drafted, and I have to take complete responsibility for that, can't even blame anybody else for that, the action that I would like to see us pursue, we really can't address under this agenda item. And so, if, you know, we can certainly discuss the issues with regards to the default under this particular agreement.
Well, I'll defend you on this. You drafted your agenda item based on the information you had at the time, which seemed pretty cut and dried.
Oh, man, was it-
No, I, well, but I should have, I should have had, you know, again, a little bit more flexibility in there to take other type of actions that we might be able to do. So, what I would do is, again, for the board, if there is some other angle or avenue that you want to do, then I think what we have to do is put that on for the next agenda. And, but again, I don't even think us considering taking other type of legal action really doesn't fit within this agenda, and we really can't even discuss it, unfortunately.
Well, I did say earlier, I may want another agenda item, and, but I think we need to continue on here because we do have public comment forums and then-
Yeah, but-
I will offer a-
No, we're not finished answering, asking questions yet. I think Dan has a really good one.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, some of these units were hooked up. Everything was working fine.
All 10 houses-
Okay, and then, UICN-
Turn on your mic, and you need to identify-
I'm sorry.
Identify yourself.
James W. Scott, S-C-O-T-T.
Yes, sir.
I'm the, one of the managers for PRRump 88.
Okay.
What you'll find here, and a very accurate description by Mr. District Attorney, and I thank all ladies and gentlemen for listening to us today, all 10 homes were hooked up and serviced. Most of these homes were speculation-built, so there wasn't people moving in immediately. But they were hooked up legitimately and with will-serve letters to each and every one of them.
Yes, and occupancy permits.
Occupancy permits, yes.
And then, UICN came and had you cut them off.
Yes.
I'd like to know why.
Well, I will have to add that it was also done through the PUC. It wasn't UICN acting independently.
They weren't arbitrary.
No, no. They weren't acting independently. They actually have an order from the PUC directing them to terminate the service.
Was this after they asked the PUC to?
Yes.
So, they asked the PUC to give them an order to cut them off?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So, it goes back to UICN then, the way I see this?
That's correct.
And I'm just wondering, you know, and you can yell at me after I'm done here, Brian, because I may say something, and just watch me and be ready to tell me to shut up. But I'm just wondering, public utilities companies, public utility companies are there to serve the public trust, and how in the world did this serve the public by cutting these homes off? I don't get this at all.
Well, again, I really don't want us to get involved in the litigation between the developer and UICN.
I'm just looking at, we have taxpayer citizens who live here, who paid, who had occupancy permits, who were entitled to, and I'd like them, if they would come up and tell us why, it would be great, so if somebody is here for that, if she could, okay, or not. Anyway, that just really bothers me about this whole thing. The other thing is, next time you give me backup, Brian, don't redact it.
Oh, that's-
This was all my-
Actually, that's, that comes with what we got.
Oh, that's what you got, okay. I thought I was reading the NRC, I thought I was reading the NRC's report on Duckam Mountain.
I don't know what-
Touche.
We wanted to waste toner.
Anyway, so I guess she says she'll be back. That was Wendy Barnett. And hopefully, she can answer that then, because to me, this is just kind of disgusting. We've had these people here, and they don't-
Well, I think, again, if-
Again, I don't get it.
Whatever, I don't know that we really want to get into-
The question is, were the people in the 10 houses paying their bills?
Well, we were the developer. We were paying the bills. There was no question about it.
But you were paying the monthly bills on each one of the houses?
The question is, and I will have to just say that when you go into the line of question that you're asking for, you're going to try the case here in front of the-
Exactly.
Oh, okay. That's where you're trying to stop me. I'm sorry, I get wound up.
And I don't think that's what we're here to do today.
Yes, I'm sorry about that then.
But just for some raw facts about the issues, we were given the will-serves, we were given the certificates of occupancy. We have sworn testimony by a UICN employee that they hooked them up at the direction of management, and then they disconnected them at the direction of management. And the excuse given is that they, we illegally hooked them up. The facts are that you, the utility is the only one that has what is referred to as a hot tap, to be able to go connect into their pressurized line and to make that connection. We don't have that. Contractors don't own that. We don't have that. There's not an outside service that does that work. So, the whole notion that we connected illegally is not correct.
And actually, if I can, since I am acting as chairman here for a few minutes, if we can draw this right back to the-
Yes.
Agenda item, that's what I was just going to say. Brian, should we bring this right back?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because I really don't want this to be a fight as to what caused the-
Although I have a, you know, I think it's really fun and interesting hearing all of this information, I think all we need to know is that you are now making a recommendation that we take no action on this item.
That's correct. And again, just for the record, that I am not casting any stones with regards to-
Of course not.
-who caused what.
Right.
But I do think it's very relevant for this board to understand that we do have 10 homes in there that does not have water or sewer service, which does make it significantly different than other developments that we have in this community. And the reasons for it really aren't important, but it obviously makes it a very grave issue for us in wanting to take some action.
So, we do have a dog in the fight, or we don't have a dog?
I believe we have a big dog in the fight.
Okay.
I would just like to make some clarifications that don't get into the legal ramifications of the case. Clarifications are that PRRump 88 has a $590,000 deposit with UICN. And we, in November, agreed, and there's an agreement that was negotiated, to release the $17,000 that they're requesting, that UICN is requesting, to recertify those lines. And we suggested, and we agreed, to deduct that from the prepaid connection fees. That's what the $590,000 is for, prepaid connection fees for all 250 homes. We agreed to allow them to deduct that in November, and that would have solved this issue in November. That was taken off the table, and now, recently, within the last week, that is back on the table. In addition to that, PRRump 88 would agree to using any funds that have paid the county for impact fees or any of that, those fees that are not being implemented right now, and apply that to this number that they're looking for to re-inspect the lines.
One thing I did want to add, commissioners, on this particular issue, is that, again, my goal in looking at the legal issues was to try to fashion something that would allow service to be connected to these eight homes without necessarily calling in the bond, because I think you have to really consider the impact when you start calling in bonds. It can have a very detrimental impact on the-
On their reputation?
Well, the development atmosphere of this valley and this county.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is that, because one of the things I think that comes out of this that I think we can cover with respect to the nature of the item being the default under the bond agreement, is the idea that, one of the things that we see happening, there was actually an amendment done to the original development agreement about 14 months later, in which a part of it, they were then allowed to, they changed the lot sizes to put in, I think, 25 multifamily houses, or 25 lots that you could put multifamily housing on. And unfortunately, well, when that development agreement was done, they actually extended the development agreement for five years, so that development agreement is not even in breach yet. They actually have until 2013 under the now-existing development agreement that's separate and apart from the warranty agreement that we're talking about. But I think it raises an interesting question that with what the developers tried to do, I do think that one of the legal avenues that the commissioners could do, and I think it would be very advisable, would be, the original agreement really does not talk about phasing within this project. And I think that what I would recommend to the commissioners is that you direct staff to basically allow us to open communications with the developer, to maybe come up with an amended development agreement that would-
Have you discussed that with Mr. Scott?
I think it's been generally, you know, thrown out, but it's something I think that we can do, that if we want to do some type of an amendment to maybe talk about this, because, again, if we put in some type of phasing, you know, we can do some things that would then work without, again, without declaring the default.
Commissioner Kenhoven.
What, then, Mr. Coonsey, what is it that you suggest we do with this item? Nothing? Table it? What?
Well, if I could just get some direction as to whether or not this commission, this board, is interested in maybe doing some discussions of amending the development agreement.
Yes.
We can do that, but I'm certainly recommending that you not take action to call in the bond.
All right.
Okay. Could you sit back there for a minute, Mr. Scott, and two, so I can bring these people up? Wendy Barnett, Robert Little, and Mel Peet. Wendy Barnett.
Hi, my name is- Hi, my name is Wendy Barnett, B-A-R-N-E-T-T. I'm the Regional Director for Utilities, Inc. of Central Nevada. First of all, I have to set a couple of things straight, just to make sure we have clear and open communication. UICN did issue will-serve letters. Will-serve letters are always contingent upon the party, the customer, the applicant, fulfilling tariff requirements. In this case, those tariff requirements were not fulfilled, and therefore, we could not provide service. The next thing that I wanted to talk about is, it is absolutely true that we have developers' money, and the $590,000 is about the right amount of money, rounded up, rounded down, rounded around. We have sought a state court action to try to be able to reallocate those monies. As Mr. Scott said, months ago, there was an agreement to be able to use those funds to be able to provide service to the homeowners, which UICN very much wants to do. However, PRRump 88 would never sign the agreement, and therefore, we cannot reallocate monies that are paid by us for a party for a specific purpose. They were not paid for us to finish infrastructure. They signed an agreement to finish infrastructure. I have not ever said that I need capacity in order to serve 10 homes. There is an option in the tariff where capacity fees can be paid in lieu of building that tank. The water was connected. It was connected without our knowledge. I also have an affidavit. I don't want to try to try this here, trying to set some things straight in the record. We did not go to the PUC. We wrote a letter to PRRump 88, asking them about the dedication of the well and the tank and how they were proceeding, because it was supposed to be done over a year ago. Not only was there a provision for four homes before the well and 40 homes before the tank, there was a deadline, because it was presumed when they signed the developers' agreement that they were going to be able to develop. And I totally understand economic times have changed, and who's caught between the rock and the hard place are seven homeowners. We were ordered throughout the discussions, when PRRump 88 would never amend the agreement, never let us do anything to serve those homes, we were ordered by then-staff counsel Elena Burton Shaw to stop service to those homes. And PRRump 88 was ordered to notify the homeowners what had happened and why, and that no one was to occupy those premises. It is true that underneath the paved portion, infrastructure is there. The four houses on the north side along Wilson, all of that pipe has been inspected. We believe it to be in good shape. The water is fully charged. Fire hydrants are there for fire protection. We would like to re-inspect the sewer mains to make sure there's no blockages, because the unfinished portion has openings into that main. And then, we could provide service to Mr. Riggs. And why I want to provide service to all the homeowners, I am particularly interested in Mr. Riggs. Mr. Riggs, I know, the infrastructure is there to immediately serve. His wife, and I did not know that until this weekend, I knew she was ill, but she's terminally ill. And to be without water is a terrible hardship on that family. I am looking for a way to legally provide service. They never dedicated the pipe to me. I have to own the pipe to be able to use the pipe, to be able to serve. If they could dedicate the pipe to me, then I would be able to serve. The back six houses have water. The sewer is much more complicated. The sewer there is going to run along the south and west perimeter up to Wilson. That pipe has never been inspected, never videoed, never pressure-tested, never mandrilled, never ball-tested. I don't know what condition it's in. Maybe it's okay, but I suspect not from the other repairs we've had to do to make other lines okay. In addition, they own the sewer line on Wilson. Without Wilson, I have a very hard time figuring out a way to provide sewer service to the new senior center. So, them not dedicating their infrastructure or allowing us control of that pipe, or allowing us control of the deposit money they've paid us to go fix the pipe, now not only affects Ashani Ridge, it affects the new senior community that would need to connect into that Wilson Road pipe. Now, there may be another way to do it, but that is certainly the most expeditious and cost-efficient way to do that. We have sought many alternatives through the PUCN, through state courts. I really urge the commission to consider ways, pulling the bond, whatever it may be, to help UICN get control of the pipe so they can serve these 10 houses. Certificate of occupancies were given. And when I found out that that happened, I asked, how did that happen? And I was told by a past Nyhite County employee, they go in, they turn on the water, if the water's on, that's deemed good. A will-serve letter does not mean they've applied for service. It does not mean infrastructure is complete. And while I believe they can all get safe drinking water, I don't believe they can all get sanitary sewer systems. There are also other developers who have made promises by this PRRump 88 developer. Their promises, too, have been broken. And now, they're faced with decisions of whether they're going to pay taxes or what they're going to do with their worthless investment without the infrastructure. And while I care about those investors and want to support them, my main concern immediately is to get Mr. Riggs service and then be able to check the lines and get the service to the other six homes. That has been my goal since the beginning of this. By the way, UICN has never done a hot tap. Only contractors do hot taps.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask, you said if they dedicated the lines to you, you could give them service? You just say that?
Particularly up on the north side, I believe that pipe is fine. If they would dedicate the pipe to me for Kachina Moon Court and Wilson and that little bit of Ashani, yeah, absolutely, I could provide service to that house right now.
Okay, so if they agreed right now to give you that dedication, we can get these people service?
That would be the four homes up on Wilson. I need to go check the lines for the other six homes and see if they're damaged.
If we get four, I mean, that's part of it. I'd be happy to get that.
I would be thrilled if I could get Mr. Riggs service today, let me tell you.
Mr. Little?
Go ahead. Good afternoon. My name is Bob Little, L-I-T-T-L-E, and I was asked to come here. Did everybody get the email that Len Cardoza sent? Because I have something I'd like to say also. Would you like for me to read his statement? Because this is a-
Who is he?
He, they own, they now own, because they had to foreclose, 58 lots on the far west side of the Ashani Ridge subdivision.
So, he's a developer?
No, they lent money to PRRump, well, to the people who were developing Ashani Ridge, and they eventually had to foreclose for non-payment and-
I guess my only question, Bob, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I want to address Mr. Coonsey, does this really have anything to do with whether or not we're going to call this bond?
Absolutely.
It does? Okay, all right.
It will. That's-
Have you, Marina, do you have copies?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you want to make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Bob's going to read it into the record.
Okay.
Well, I just don't want to take off my time, because there's a couple of things I'd like to say also.
Just take whatever time you need.
You've got 30 seconds, Bob, go ahead.
Anyway, public, this is public comment, and this is from Leonard Cardoza. He's the managing member of a group called PRRump 88 Lots LLC. PRRump 88 Lots LLC was formed by the individual lenders to recover on a defaulted $3.1 billion first-trust deed loan made in 2006 to PRRump 88 LLC for the development of part of the Ashani Ridge subdivision. The subdivision was never completed. PRRump 88 breached its obligations to us under the note in 2008, has paid no property taxes since 2007, 2008 tax year, and failed to pay subcontractors, causing liens to be recorded against the property, securing our note. In November 2010, PRRump 88 Lots- In November 2010, P crisp 88 Lots completed foreclosure and now owns 58 of the total 252 Ashawnee Ridge lots, approximately 20 acres or 23% of the entire subdivision. Remember that, because that's one of the things I want to address. The commissioners have been, have before them today an agenda item from the district attorney to enforce P crisp 88 subdivision agreement with the county by calling due a performance bond, which was required by the county to ensure the improvements were completed. That bond is required to provide funds to remedy precisely the conditions we find ourselves in today. P crisp 88 has failed to complete the work, defaulted on its loans with multiple private lenders and banks, not paid property taxes for three years, not paid subcontractors, and left the county with an ISO and incomplete utility infrastructure to provide service to the lots. In June, two months from now, the treasurer will record a tax deed taking title to most of the subdivision, including our 58 lots, and prepare to auction the lots in April of 2012. As is, the lots have little value. Our 58 lots, 20 acres, opened for bidding for, at the trustee's sale for $100,000, and there were no public bidders at that price. They are listed for sale on MLS for $275,000 with little interest. Unless improvements are completed, as is possible, the county will offer them in its tax auction, and no public bidder will even appear to pay the estimated $3,100 per lot that will be owed in back taxes, penalties, and costs of sale at the time. If so, the county will be stuck with them in inventory, accruing no additional taxes, generating no revenue carried for tax sale from year to year. Nye County has a financial interest in seeing these improvements completed as well, so that a tax sale may be successful in recovering taxes already owed and placing ownership into stronger hands that will pay ongoing taxes. We request and strongly recommend that the commissioners act now to enforce the subdivision agreement, call the performance bond due, and use the funds to complete the infrastructure that originally committed to be built. Leonard Cardoza, Managing Member, P crisp 88 LLC. It is, you said you had copies. Okay. The one item that I said about the 23% of the subdivision, that particular 23% does not even have power infrastructure. I am the listing agent on this property, and I asked Valley Electric to go over there, because I could find nothing there in the way of infrastructure. So I asked them to go over. I saw stuff sticking out of the ground, and their engineer went over there, and he said he could find nothing on the west end. So there's 23% of the subdivision that doesn't have power. I don't know about the rest. But what, by the way, how did I do on time? Len said he, when he typed this up, he had too many-
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
What I would like to bring up is that this is turning into another subdivision like Nye County seems to be having a history with. Over almost 40 years ago, we had a sub-developer, that's what they called themselves for many years, come out to P crisp by the name of Preferred Equities. They were preferred properties at the time, and they'd just been kicked out of Texas, Arizona, and California when they came to Nye County and found themselves a home. They did subdivisions like this in the 1990s. They even acquired what they called betterment fees from individuals to supposedly provide the water and sewer services to their property and never used a penny of that for it. And today, the county is faced with over 18,000 lots without water and sewer out there that they're constantly having to put up for a notice of trustee's sale. On the, if you look at the list right now, it is dominated by Calvada North and Meadows. There is no infrastructure out there. I think it would be a very good idea if this bond was captured. I think it would be a very good idea if you've got a private enterprise to go in there and put in the infrastructure and build this thing out, so that the people will actually have something to show for all the money. I mean, these people will probably lose their land. I mean, with this, with, how in the world they ever got an $85,000 value on this land back in 2007, I don't know. But that's what it was taxed at. That's why it's going to tax foreclosure. There's no way these guys can pay taxes on an $85,000 lot when they can't sell it for $4,700 and there's no infrastructure. And the road was never even put in. You go over there now, you have to have a, it'll take you a while to even find out where it was supposed to be cut into their subdivision.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Coonsey, are you aware of the letter?
I'm not aware of the letter, but, I mean, there's been, you know, many people, you know, expressing opinions.
Okay.
And-
There's nothing new in that letter?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, again, it's, it's a question of, you've got a lot of people that own land out there, but where's the development going to come from? And again, are, you know, you're being asked to put in $4 million worth of, of roads. For what purpose? You know, it, it can always be done in the future.
I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing new in that letter.
No, there's, there's, there's nothing, nothing new.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot.
Hold on one minute.
Okay.
Pete, you don't have-
My name's Melvin Pete. I live in one of those homes, one of the six homes. And that portion that he's referring to is all paved. Where we live, the portion that, that these other people own, is not paved and probably won't be built on by, I believe, your own words, 20 years or possibly even more. So to pull that bond, to complete a, a project that won't be built on in, in probably our lifetime, to me is absolutely ludicrous. Now, the water is there and has been there all along. It's just a court battle between Utilities Inc. and, and P crisp 88. So there is water there. There is sewer there. The inspections have been done by the county before those lines were ever accepted and covered. I'm sure they were, they were inspected by Nye County and approved. So I think personally, had Utilities Inc. ever intended to turn the water up, back on in there, they could have a year ago. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wendy, usually you have one time to, to talk, but I'm going to let you say one more thing.
I just forgot.
And Mr. Little, if you have something else, I'll be, I'll, I'll let you continue on.
I just forgot to address a question that Mr. Schenhoffen had, and I believe it was him. And that is, while UICN would prefer to have roads to protect their infrastructure, there are ways to put in the infrastructure and create some safeguards to protect it, particularly at the manholes. So for those back six houses that have sewer pipe they need, which is unpaved, we can make that happen without paving the roads, sir.
Thank you. I, my, my whole concern here, I think what the last gentleman said here is, is absolutely correct. This seems to be a court battle between UICN and P crisp 88, and in the meantime, these, these homeowners are pawns.
I think the-
So whatever we can do to get them taken care of, and then we can deal with what are the roads and how much infrastructure, I would just like to see us concentrate on that, or you guys concentrate on it. Thank you.
Yeah, our catch-22 is that growth has to pay for itself in the state of Nevada. The utility is not allowed to put out money to go finish that sewer infrastructure for the back six homes.
Yeah, but the front ones are already done.
I, I think the front ones will be good.
Then we should do those.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's still my position that I would hope that one day, the Nye County commissioners, either this one or some down the future, would step forward and stop allowing the subdivision of lands without having the development done. Joni had just came on, come on the county Board of Commissioners when they were saddled with Calvada Meadows Unit 4 and the bond issue that was supposedly for that, which eventually was discovered not to be able to even cover the cost of the road initial construction, much less the paving and the utility infrastructure to follow. And if you, costs never go down, and if this Ford, whatever the bond issue is, is allowed to continue to go into the future, you will have another Calvada Meadows here. You'll have another 252 lots or whatever that will not be usable. And the only people who make money, just like Preferred Equities when they packed up and left town, is the developer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have one little thing to add. Mr. Riggs could not be here today. He had to take his wife in for cancer treatments, and I told him I would share my conversation with him with the board. And he had asked not to pull a bond, but he did ask if we could in any way assist him, that he has a, a- he, he has a action going with the PUC right now. And Mr. Coonsey, you said we're very limited on this item. Could we direct you to look into this further and come back with some suggestions? Because I would like to see the board get somewhat involved without, you know, not getting into the lawsuit end of it, but to try to do what we can to get those people, 10, 10 homes serviced and back online. And Mr. Pete is, has intervened and is in a show cause. There is a hearing on the fourth or fifth of next month. And if, if, if we could, or if I could direct you to take what appropriate action that you can do to look into that and maybe even be involved in that.
Commissioner, that's absolutely appropriate to do. The only thing is, we just can't go into in-depth discussion about what different options there might be for us to do, because it's not on the agenda.
I didn't have a forum for you.
I apologize. I came in after lunch. I believe that, I, I did send a letter in.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you speak.
My name's Donna Osborne. I'm with the law firm of Wright, Finley, and Zach. Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N. I represent Flagstar Bank, who is the mortgage holder on the three remaining vacant properties. So it's just our interest to make sure that the vacant properties are also taken care of. It's my client that's paying the property taxes on those units. And if nothing's done, then they may, they may very well choose to not do that. And at this point, we have obtained bankruptcy court relief from the stay in order to proceed with foreclosure, and actually take title of those units. If we do that, then obviously, we need to have infrastructure and water and sewer available to make those properties available and that they will no longer be vacant and can actually be up-kept and be a part of this community. If, if in fact those vacant units aren't considered as, with the other occupied premises, then there could be detriment to the county if those three just remained as tax-leaned. So it was mainly just my position. I wanted to make sure the court is aware that it is my client's been paying the property taxes. We are proceeding.
We're not a court.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your commission. Sorry. I do apologize. I'm used to presenting more information to courts.
You're going to bust your bubble over there.
Absolutely. But I, we, we just want to make sure our concern and let you know that the vacant properties, it is our intent of our client to proceed with whatever we can in order to get water to those properties as well, so that they can be part of this community and, and survive.
Thank you. I've always wanted to tell him he's out of order, but that's going to have to wait for a while.
Thank you. That's, that's all I had.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Coonsey, is there any jeopardy of the bond that we're talking about today somehow becoming unattainable for us with, within any specific timeframe, or do we still have time left?
We still have time. There, there's no specific provision in the bond for us declaring a default within a specified period of time.
Anything else?
So what are we doing?
No action?
There's instructions to staff.
No, we have to give him instruction.
We already did that.
Well, and, and again, I thought that I was doing a couple of minutes ago was-
I thought you did too.
Yeah, this is, was the direction to staff and to take no action on this agenda item at this time, because obviously-
We have to instruct him to begin conversations to amend the development agreement.
And I would recommend actually that you, that you vote up or down on taking action on the agenda item with the, with the instructions.
If-
But that is not what's on the agenda item.
Yes.
Your action is not dictated by the agenda. The agenda item is, is merely the subject matter that can be discussed.
But if we vote, if we vote now to not to take the bond, can we bring it back in a month and take the bond?
Or someone can make a motion to declare it a default and it dies for lack of a second, or however you want to procedurally do that.
We could table it or not take an action.
You could table it.
Table it. I make a motion to table item 13.
With instructions.
With instructions that were given to the DA to further-
Amend the development agreement.
Amend the development agreement.
And seek all- alternate solutions.
And seek alternate solutions.
Yeah, and, and look into-
My motion.
Okay.
That was my motion, but I'll second it. Yeah.
I'm confused. Sam, did you get that?
I'm not sure I got it.
Oh, repeated.
I think there's a motion by Commissioner Schenhoffen to proceed with the DA, with the development.
Actually, when I say, I don't, I don't think you need to table it.
Thank you.
If, if the motion is just simply to give instructions to pursue other avenues, you can do that. The agenda just dies for lack of emotion.
There you go.
Yeah.
Just want to, just what he said.
Restated.
Can I, before we completely leave this, can I just go back to one thing? If we could get P crisp 88 and Wendy over here, if you guys would like to go out in the corner and figure out how to dedicate that line so those people get water, we'll be done with that part? Because that's what was stated over here. She said she'd take it.
Good luck with that.
She said she'd take it if it was dedicated. No? She just said she would.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Come up here.
Thank you. No?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I got a motion to table this item.
No.
We're not taking any action.
Dies for lack of emotion.
We're just giving instruction to Brian.
Okay.
Yes.
Then we don't have to have a-
Are you clear on what the instructions are? Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, to seek out other options for-
So we don't need a motion?
No, we don't. My motion is to move on.
I'll second that.
I'm trying to, but Dan Schenhoffen won't let me. Okay, we'll go to-
Is there enough money in the budget for a train, lines, or gun?
You didn't vote on the-
We vote, oh, we got to vote on?
Yeah.
I'm going to take a break.
Yeah.
Okay. I made the motion. She seconded. We instructed you to look further into-
Geez, so Pete.
Further discussion? Are we taking?
No, we're chasing them out. All we got to do is vote.
Is this a motion or?
Yeah, the, the motion was, as I was directed by Commissioner Boraski, to explore different options and come back at a different meeting.
Sam, have you got this?
Give us.
Yeah.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
None. Thank you.
Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
You got an extra vote out there, too.
I didn't second that.
Who didn't second?
Time for a five-minute break, I guess.
It doesn't matter. Don't, don't, don't say anything else.
Just go to the next item.
I'm saying nothing.
Any opposed?
Move on.
Passes 5-0, I think.
Move on.
Okay, we'll go to item 11I. Action, discussion, deliberation, possible decision, and direction to staff to move forward with obtaining one appraisal pursuant to the NRS 244.22795 for the intent of selling property located at 3232 Bolden Mountain Lane in Tonopah, Nevada, in a not-too-exceed amount of $1,500 out of a fund 269 land sale cost. And I believe we've had this up before.
Repeatedly.
To approve.
Yeah, we're, and, second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, seconded by Commissioner Easley. Further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you know, this is the HUD House. If we can get this sold, we're going to get reimbursed for all of these appraisals.
And you will be happy.
I will be thrilled.
Okay. Further discussion?
None.
Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we'll go to item 20. I, I should wait on this, because he takes forever. Item 20, ongoing project report. Mr. Osborne.
I have nothing further to add, unless you have a question.
No questions. Let's move along.
Item B, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision concerning the request to approve a minimum of understanding between Nye County and Rural Nevada Development Corporation for the purpose of obtaining services and deliverables for the fulfillment of Nevada Commission on Economic Development, Local Development Grants Requirements, in a not-too-exceed amount of $20,000 out of fund 247 grants. Mr. Osborne.
Well, part of our plan on economic development is to work with new businesses, and that's something that we don't have a skill set to do, but R and D C has been doing that around the state, and that's who we plan to use as part of our grant that we are seeking through Nevada Economic Development. So we're ready to- So we're ready to move ahead with that.
So you're subsidizing RNDC above what they receive from the state?
Yeah, we're subsidizing them in the amount of $20,000 out of our overall grant proposal to Nevada Commission on Economic Development.
Because they're handling the.
That's what they have done. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is this service to be provided for the entire county, every community, from Gabs to Perump?
Yes, it is.
On what schedule?
Well, there is no set schedule. It's just to work with the different businesses as they come in to try and develop them, but there isn't a set schedule. Maybe I don't understand your question.
Well, I want to know, is he gonna be in every community in Nye County?
Yes, he will be responsive to it.
Wait, that's not what I asked. I didn't ask if he was gonna be responsive. I was asking, is your body gonna be in all of those communities seeking out opportunities to assist small businesses?
This is Alan Parker, and I do work for Rural Nevada Development Corporation. I've worked for them for nine years now. With RNDC, my service territory has always included Nye County from the very beginning. It includes Nye County today. I am a circuit rider. I will go anywhere within the county to talk to either someone who wants to start a business or to counsel an existing business. Yes. My answer to your question, Commissioner Eastley, is yes.
That's what I wanted to hear. How many years have we been funding this grant?
This is a brand-new grant. Let me go back to a couple of commission meetings ago. RNDC was approached by Eden way back when, probably in 2001. My office came about in April of 2002. Eden partnered with RNDC through a memorandum of agreement to service Nye County, and for that Eden would provide a partial amount to fund the office, which was $20,000 a year. And that funding, for the most part, came from Eden's funding, which came from the Nevada Commission on Economic Development. When the county voted recently to terminate its MOU for economic development with Eden Inc. and to become its own development authority effective, actually, April 1, prior to that and discussions I had with the county manager, Assistant County Manager, because the Nevada Commission on Economic Development asks an authority to do X number of things, including assistance with business startups, assistance with business expansion, business retention, when Mr. Osborne was putting together his plan to move forward with economic development and with the scope of work that was submitted to the Nevada Commission on Economic Development for this LDDP grant. Part of that was to continue to service Nye County through RNDC. And so this is just a continuation of funding which had been coming into the RNDC office for economic development for Nye County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could ask, so in all those years, what, maybe it'd be too long for you to list here, but maybe you could send us a list of what businesses have we obtained from this? What solid things have we gotten?
I can actually not give you a list of businesses without actually those businesses giving me permission to do so because the work of RNDC is personal and confidential. I have businesses that we have lent money to. I have businesses that have come to us in a number of different ways. But what I can give to you, if you would like to see it, we put out every quarter, and I will make it available to the county commissioners and to the county, because I don't know if you've seen this directly. Some of you may have seen it in the past. It's RNDC's contributions to Nye County. This is done on a quarterly basis as well as an accumulative basis since 2001, telling you how many businesses we have serviced in total in the county, how much has been made available in the way of business financing to this county, how many jobs have been created, how many businesses have been retained. And if you would like, I can give you copies of this right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Johnny, go ahead.
Is there training?
I was going to say, no.
They were doing some training in here for the postage machine.
Oh, I'm, hey, whoever's, are you in Beatty?
The tour.
Oh, they're in the training room. Pam, what I was going to say, I was going to ask you if there was, if we have any, is there a deadline on when we have to sign this?
Talking about?
The MOU.
Our contract?
Are we under any time constraints? Because what I would prefer to do, there's no backup for this with the exception of the agreement. My concern is that we've been funding this, gosh, I think, at least for five or six years, and I want to see some results. I'd like to see that.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, Al, how do the people in places like Round Mountain, Gabs, I own, I don't think you're gonna get any business there, but Railroad Valley, some of these places, how do they get in touch with you about, how do you contact them or how do they contact you so that you could assist them?
We get contacts through the SBA. We get contacts through the Nevada Commission on Economic Development. We get contacts through other offices of RNDC.
Hold on, hold on.
I think we lost contact.
We lost contact with, she's working. Why don't we take a five-minute break?
I'll go ask her back here and fix it.
Just in the event somebody wanders in to hear something and we're not online. Yes, unless you had any comments on the RFP for the fiber optics. No.
I have a meeting at 4:00.
Yeah, just.
I have a meeting at 3:45. I can beat you by 15 minutes.
To table this. I'd like to make a motion to table this till we get further information.
I have a motion by Commissioner Chinhopin to table this item until we get further information. Seconded by Commissioner.
Eastley.
Further discussion? Call for the question.
Bless you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we'll go to item 23A. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision concerning a request to set a date, time, location for a public hearing for the following final budget for FY year 2011-12.
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of staff, I move to set the public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on Monday, May 16 at the, well, the county government center. I guess that's in Perump.
You say 10:00 a.m.?
Yes, it's in the backup.
May 16?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to set the date, time, and location 10:00 a.m., May 16, 2011, here at the Bob.
At the Bob. Here at the Bob.
Walt Williams' meeting room. Here in Perump.
Mr. Chairman.
I like the Bob better.
I made the motion, she seconded it.
You seconded it?
She seconded it.
Seconded by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion?
I'm sorry.
Call for the question. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes 5-0. Item 23B. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to.
Get this one.
One. Set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill Number 2011-01, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 18.08 Transit Lodging Business License Tax by modifying Chapter 18.08.175, use of proceeds of tax by creating two separate funds designated as Amargosa.
Amargosa.
Amargosa Valley Transit Lodging Tax Fund, Economic Development Fund, and Amargosa Valley Transit Lodging Tax Fund Park and Recreation Fund, and other matters properly related thereto.
Pam, we have, the folks in Amargosa Valley on the town advisory board are absolutely clear what they're getting themselves into by asking for this amendment to that ordinance. They understand that.
It was presented to them at their budget workshop this year and how this would work.
So they're absolutely clear on that.
They are absolutely clear.
Then I will propose Bill 2011-01 and set a time, date, and location of May 16 at 10:45 a.m. during the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting here in Perump.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to.
Propose, I proposed the bill.
Propose Bill 2011-01 and setting a date, time, and location of 10:45 on May 16 in Perump, Nevada. Seconded by Commissioner Chinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 23.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have to read.
That's right. Read it into the record.
Bill Number 2011-01 is a bill, really? Is this our first bill, 2011-01?
Well, it was, it was assigned a while back. It took us a while. It went through the DA's office review, so.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Very slow.
Bill 2011-01 is a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code 1808 Transient Lodging Business License Tax by creating two separate, and there's a typo there, Lorena, funds designated as Amargosa Valley Transit Lodging Tax Fund, Economic Development Fund, and Amargosa Valley Transit Lodging Tax Fund Parks and Recreation Fund, and other matters properly related thereto. How are they gonna pay their parks and rec, their parks person?
They are considering moving the position into.
The general fund.
They are considering reducing the hours for other positions and this position. They are looking at several alternatives to be able to do that.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, item 23C. Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to one award RFP 2011-4, building and grounds fiber optic cable. The amount of the lowest bid for the trenching part of the bill was $31,228.96, and the low bid for the cable part of the bid is $14,331, and $45,559.96 of the project is to be funded from Fund 492 settlement agreement, and the remaining $7,106 is to be funded by the town of Perump and to execution of contract.
I have a question for you, Bob, if I may, please.
Yeah.
This is similar, but not the same as the contract we have in Tonopah where we're kind of splitting the baby. And the contract I'm talking about up there is with the electronics and the fencing portion of the gate at the sheriff's office. We're not gonna run into problems here because this is only digging a trench, right?
That's correct. One contract would be for digging the trench, the other for running the cabling. The towns portion will be to put cabling from one of their buildings to the next.
Yeah, I guess my only problem is, is that we're splitting the project. We've got two different contractors on the same project.
Yeah, well, most of the time when you have somebody that does fiber optics, they don't dig the ditch.
Okay, all right. I just want to ensure that we're gonna have somebody keeping an eye on it.
I'm certainly gonna be.
Everybody's gonna be happy.
I'm gonna be keeping an eye on it because it's supplying. I'm gonna be keeping an eye on it because it's supplying fiber optic phone and data to my new complex.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the execution of the contract.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve.
Well, I think we need to do that different. I think we need to award the bid in two different manners.
Oh, so sorry, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
My motion would be to award the bid for the...
It's in the backup.
Yeah, I got them both here.
To award the trenching portion...
Morales Construction.
To Morales Construction for thirty-one two twenty-eight ninety-six, and to Pelican, yeah, it's...
Correct.
It's under recommendations. Go ahead. No, you started the motion, so...
My motion would be to award the bid...
The trenching portion.
Hang on, let me find it here, Donna.
It's under the recommendation...
Yes, ma'am, I know, let me read it.
(laughing).
Come on, let's go.
My motion would be to award the trenching, trenching portion of the bid to Morales Construction in Perump in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars ninety-six cents, and Pelican Systems Group, Inc. of Las Vegas, as recommended by the staff for the cabling portion in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one, and to award the contract.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to award Morales Construction for the trenching in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-one six, and Pelican Systems, Systems Group Incorporated of Las Vegas is recommending contractor for the cable, cable portion in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars, and execution of contract. Seconded by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion?
Hey, Bob, this was great, thank you. That was really helpful.
Actually, Ross Beckman did that.
Really?
That was really helpful, I liked that.
Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, we'll go to item twenty-three B, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to augment the budget of Nye County Animal Shelter on the basis of greater than budgeted revenue of, the request is augmentation is on an amount of thirty thousand dollars, and will be covered in expense due to the volume of spay and neutering procedures exceeding budget level.
I had a, I didn't have any questions on this at all until I came into the meeting this morning and looked at our little screen, how they do the animals on there, and I saw an advertisement for the spay and neuter program. Do we do that for the whole community, or do we...
Yes.
I, I, that's when I started having questions. Why do we do that? Why would we not have every, why would we not only do spays and neuters for the animals that we adopt out? Why wouldn't we have everybody else use private businesses, you know?
We offer a low-cost spay-neuter to try to get as many animals done as possible. It, hopefully, it keeps us from needing an additional animal control officer.
Yeah, but it's needing, it's, it looks like it's causing us...
It's paying, no, it's actually paying for itself.
Yeah, that's how I was confused on this one, is because I originally read it the same way you did, Joni.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here, I have a...
You're over. You have collected more money than...
The money doesn't come back to me. The money goes into the general fund.
I see.
If I sell a spay-neuter voucher, it goes to the general fund.
Well, what do we pay the veterinarian?
That's what we're, well, we're budgeted at the beginning of the year with X amount of dollars. The program's just getting bigger every year, we're doing more spay and neuters.
And you collect the money, and it goes to the one oh one.
And we're collecting the money in, but it doesn't come back, that's the problem.
For you to pay the, doesn't come back for you to pay the vet.
Right now, I may collect in about eighty-five hundred dollars a month.
Hold on.
Well, what are we paying the vet, I know, I know what you're saying, that it comes back, but what are, what are we paying the veterinarian to do this?
The veterinarian is paid eighty dollars an hour. So, he's, he's paid six hundred and forty dollars for a day, and we schedule, we try to schedule five spays, five neuters each, dogs and cats, so he does twenty spays and neuters, which brings in about twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
I, I actually have it broke down, we broke down what we've done through February.
Hold on just a minute, Bob. Pam, go ahead.
This augmentation is being requested based on additional revenue that will come in with the cost of continuing the program. We don't have the money yet. It's anticipated revenue for continuing the program. My analysis did not show it breaking even when I looked at it. It showed that we were in the hole about fifteen thousand dollars. But in the accumulation of the expenses in this, in these accounts, are commingled the costs of running the shelter as well as the cost for doing just the spay-and-neuter program. So, it's difficult for me to make that determination because of the fact that these are commingled together.
Then let me ask this, can I, if I made a motion to, to fund ten thousand and ask you to do an audit, would you have time for that, or is this a bad time of year?
Well, of course, it's a bad time of year, but we, I mean, we could do it.
Then that's my motion to approve ten thousand and ask for just an audit to see if we're making money off of this, or breaking even.
My problem right now is the animal shelter is broke.
That's why I said ten thousand dollars.
It's, ten thousand dollars is probably already spent. I need to, I need to either stop this program completely, or we need to fund it so that we can go through the rest of the year. I, I'm saying that we've...
Ten thousand dollars until the next meeting isn't gonna help you?
Again, it's just, right now, I have a vet bill to pay, I need supplies, I need supplies today for the, for the next spay-neuter clinic to happen.
And ten thousand dollars won't do it, it has to be thirty thousand.
I'm, I'm just telling you that the shelter is broke, I can't, it, it's not just the spay-neuter clinic money, the way it's all put together, it's everything that I'm running this shelter on for the rest of the year.
Just like, just like Commissioner Wickman asked for, it was just a thousand dollars to renew a contract with the sheriff's office, I'm just asking you for, can we give you ten thousand dollars, and we'll re-adjournize this for the next commission meeting, and that's five thousand a week? If you're bringing in twelve hundred a day, then...
I'm, I'm not getting the twelve hundred to bring in, you have to understand, it's going to the general fund.
I know that, I realize that, I know.
I'd second your motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to authorize ten thousand dollars until the next meeting.
Yeah, and then just re-adjournize this and ask Pam to do a, just to do an audit.
And do an audit. Seconded by Commissioner...
If that's appropriate, Pam.
Seconded by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
It's not you, Bob, we're, we're looking for every nickel, that's all.
I understand that.
Yeah. We're frantic.
Okay, twenty-seven A, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision and direction of staff to move forward with stakeholder coordination and planning for the preparation of submission of a proposed, proposal for the Department of Energy, DOE, for a energy park in Amargosa Valley Science and Technology Park with a regional focus for, one, development of renewable energy storage and generation equipment and techniques, and two, cost-effective water treatment methods. If DOE accepts the proposal, the acceptance will be brought before the board for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Both, one and two?
Direction to staff to move forward with stakeholder coordination and planning. One and two are telling us what they're doing.
Yep. I have a motion for, by Commissioner Wickman to approve, seconded by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Four zero.
Four zero with Commissioner Eastley not present.
And Darrell, that does provide what you need, right, that action?
Item twenty-three A, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision...
Twenty-three?
Thirty-three A.
Okay.
Action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to approve the funding of Nye County Water District in the amount of twenty thousand to cover operating expenses from May first, two thousand and eleven, to June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, and can be funded from two six nine land sales.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wickman to approve, seconded by Commissioner Borowski. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some comments to make here. One, in this backup, the problem I had with this backup, it doesn't tell us anything, it says they need twenty thousand till the end of the year. Last month, it was eighteen hundred dollars is what they spent. I got that figure by talking to Pam. Again, nothing was in the backup. And I, and I can't support it without, without backup, and it seems like a lot for two months when they've only spent eighteen hundred last month.
I think they've spent more than that when you consider that staff time that's been devoted to the, I think that's what he's trying to cover. Am I mistaken?
It's the figures I got, but ten thousand, ten thousand is a bit more a month than what's going out.
Our budget, starting July first, was for about twenty thousand dollars per month. We just had cut this in half. Our average expenditures have been somewhere as in the four to five thousand per month range, and historically, we have recently signed a contract for a contractor, Walt Hoover, to provide additional assistance for about three thousand a month, so we had just put ten thousand in for that purpose. The Water District grant had sixty-seven thousand dollars remaining in it that was returned back to the overall grant. It expired on time, or will expire on time on April thirtieth. That sixty-seven thousand dollars is coming back to Nye County for use in our groundwater evaluation program, so it's a fairly good swap for the county to get sixty-seven thousand back and pay twenty thousand just to help keep this going forward.
Again, my, my problem with voting for this is I just don't have the figures. They're not here in the backup, so I won't be, I won't be supporting it.
You have an opportunity to vote however you want to go, but I think you already have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, in a second, I think you do.
Mm-hmm.
Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
That passes four one. And let, let staff know right now that you need to put a little bit more information in the backup because commissioners are making decisions based on what you're trying to tell us, so be a little more forecoming with the information. Item thirty-three B, action, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision concerning a request to approve an interlocal contract between Nye County and State Nevada acting by and through its Department of Public Safety and Records and Technology Division for the purp, purpose of exchanging and sharing GIS data.
Non-proprietary GIS information, and I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley to approve, seconded by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Is there anything other than general public comment?
We didn't do the planning agenda.
Oh, we gotta go to, huh? We'll go to timed, eleven o'clock timed item, planning, zoning, and building agenda item. Okay, we'll go to number one, expertise communications and conflict of interest to closure statement. Any of you commissioners which disclosed anything?
No, not a thing.
Okay, we'll go to act, number one, action request to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Bill two thousand and ten dash sixteen.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
And a discussion, deliberation, and possible decision on a request to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill twenty-ten dash sixteen, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code seventeen point oh-four, the Perump Regional Planning District zoning regulation by amending section seventeen oh-four point nine five oh governing the site development plan and review and approval procedures.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to set a date, time, and location of, as per the backup here, May, Bill number two, twenty-ten dash sixteen for May sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, eleven AM in Commissioners Chambers of Perump, Nevada.
Okay.
And then I'll read the title when we get to through that.
Second.
I have a date, time, and location set for Bill twenty-ten dash sixteen for May sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, at eleven AM at Perump Commissioners Chambers. I have a second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. You want to read it into record?
There you go. The title, title, a bill proposing to amend the Nye County Code seventeen point oh-four, the Perump Regional Planning District zoning regulations by amending section seventeen point oh-four point nine five zero governing site development plan review and approval procedures and other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Kenobin. We'll go to item thirty-four, general public comment.
I have notes on this.
Go to item number thirty-five, announcement.
Yes.
We have the upcoming annual Independence Day Parade coming up on Fourth of July, and we'll give you more information at the next meeting. We also have a five-year anniversary for the Nye County Veteran Service Office, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, at the Perump Nugget Hotel and Casino, from one PM to five PM.
Thank you, Richard Borowski. Item thirty-six.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Borowski to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Shinhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Have a nice day.
We're adjourned, we'll talk later.
What?
I'd like to see the video.
Joni, we have something for you.
You got something?
How come you don't ever have anything for me?
She got it.
How come you never have anything for me? I don't want some. I thought I had all this done. I had all this done once, didn't I?